Mayor, I have two changes I'd like council to consider. On the consent agenda, we had items C and D that needed further discussion come off the agenda. Considering the amount of conversation we're going to have in tonight's meeting, I would like to move those to July. They're not anything that has pressing for this month.
Okay. Is that it for changes? I believe so.
I apologize Rodney, I said D under the, it is not D, D will stay, that is under new business. You got the right one. So those, those two to July.
So the two changes would be to move to C and new business six A to the July meeting.
That is correct.
Thank you. Is there a motion on the floor to adopt the agenda as adjusted this evening? It's our second. All in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. At this time, I would like to welcome Reverend Roddy Carlin of Providence Baptist Church to lead us in our invocation this evening.
First, I'd like to say thank you for inviting me to open up this town council meeting with a prayer. Let us pray. Holy God and loving Father, thank you on behalf of all who are gathered here this evening. Thank you for your many, many abundant blessings. Thank you for the life itself that we have, for the measure of health and that you've granted us to fulfill our callings in service to you and to the town of Harrisburg. We read in Romans 13, "You said in your holy word that every citizen ought to obey the governing authorities, since you have established those very authorities to promote peace and order and justice." Therefore, I pray for our mayor, I pray for the various levels of our town officials, and in particular for this assembled town council. And I'm asking that you graciously grant them wisdom to govern amid conflicting interests and issues of our times. Give to them a sense of welfare and true needs of our people. Grant unto them a keen thirst for justice and rightness. Grant unto them the ability to work together in harmony even when there is dishonest disagreements. Father bless them with a personal peace in their lives and join their task as you lead them in their duties as council members. I pray for the agenda set before them this evening. Please give assurance of what, what would please you and what would benefit those who live and work in the town of Harrisburg. It's in the most blessed holy name that we pray, in the name of Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen.
Thank you Reverend. Everyone, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I would like to welcome our current Miss Harrisburg, North Carolina Teen USA Addison Williams to the podium this evening. Ms. Williams will be sharing about her role as Miss Harrisburg as well as her Connected Kindness Initiative.
Um, thank you all. Can you hear me? Okay. Um, thank you all for your time this evening. Um, so hello, I'm Addison Williams, Miss Harrisburg Teen USA. I'll represent Harrisburg at North Carolina Teen and I'm really excited to share this presentation with you all. I am an upcoming junior at Hickory Ridge and this presentation will hopefully make you guys learn a little bit more about bullying and my platform. Um, so first, my platform is called Connected Kindness and Connected Kindness is an anti-bullying program for schools. I have two initiatives, one is for elementary students and one is for middle school students. These initiatives are Fill Your Bucket and Leave Your Thumbprint. Um, I created this platform when I was 12 years old because like so many others, I am a victim of multiple kinds of bullying. And I got through it and I was able to stand up to it and with this program, I'm able to be a voice for those who need help with standing up to bullying. It's also called Connected Kindness because I'm not also having kids connect in their schools. I'm also having our community and my sister queens connecting with this program as well. So diving right into the initiatives, first is Fill Your Bucket. So Fill Your Bucket includes two books that I read before we get into any activity. And there's one for older elementary ages and one for younger because there's a different level of maturity in elementary school students. And both of them teach them about what being a bucket filler is while also teaching them about bullying. And then, once we finish reading the books, I have all the classmates say something kind about their classmates and then we go into the fun activity. This fun activity includes all of the students writing down a random act of kindness on a star that they cut in color. And then they try to compete to see who can fill a bucket the fastest. Sometimes there'll be really fun competition in the schools and maybe they'll put it on a bulletin board of who won. Um, so it's really, really cool because it's engaging and informative. So starting with bucket fillers in action, um, the definition of being a bucket filler is someone who does random acts of kindness wherever they go and only spreads love, kindness and positivity to peers, relatives, and sometimes strangers. Bucket fillers are those who pledge to be a continued filler of those characteristics for all of us to one day be united. Here are a few picks from, um, being bucket filler in action and including the one to the left says bucket filler pledge and that's something that I just talked about and that is something that they receive once they've completed the activity. So now going into my second initiative with leave a thumbprint. It's the same concept as fill a bucket, but it's more mature for middle school students. By doing a random act of kindness, kids will place their thumbprint onto a poster board and once the poster or posters are completely filled out, they'll hang them up in their schools so we can see the uniqueness and differences between all the students. A lot of teenagers are struggling with our identity and being in their own skin. And by doing this activity, they can see how unique they are and that'll help their mentality. And it really helps also by doing that is still preventing bullying wherever they are. And so now what does all of it mean? Well, the goal that I'm fulfilling with this program is so that all kids, teens and our community can be prepared for their future. I believe that by helping prevent bullying and anything going on in our society starts with our younger generation. And it's so happens I'm really good at kids and so it's super fun seeing everything that they're doing from such a young age. And with Connected Kindness, it just teaches everyone how they can do an impact on their own lives while spreading love and kindness. So here's a few things that kindness is that is always good to keep in mind with what it represents. So first kindness is power, which shows impact and variety. And then it's also love and that love is spreading God's word while teaching how to not be a bully. And it's super big with me, especially because I am a teenage Christian and I'm seeing that that's not very big in with other teenagers. And so if I can also help that with the younger generation, it spreads very positively. Um, and then lastly, it's positive. Within the past two years of the pandemic, we've noticed that negativity has taken control. And with Connected Kindness, positivity is taking over that and it helps a lot with the generation and even older kids too. Like my age, it's helping a lot with this program where I can only teach everyone how they can be positive. So I'm sure everyone's wondering, okay, but what have you already done? And so something that I've done is I've already reached 1.2 plus million kids virtually and in person. Because yes, we've been moving on from the pandemic, but some schools still rather me do it virtually. And I'm completely prepared for that and I've already done it. Um, and the initiatives are continuous throughout school year so that the kids can go a year without the constant bullying and mental health. And then also I've worked within schools and have made my own partnering with friends to further the message that kindness matters. That's my little motto that I have with this program. So now here's an overview of why I created Connected Kindness in the first place. Mostly from my own experiences with bullying and mental health along with some of my siblings and friends who have experienced it too. We all got through it and I'm able to help the younger generation get through it too. Then I've also created it because of learning the impact of the pandemic, then anti-bullying program is very prevalent in our society and for our schools. And then lastly, from my personal growth of learning the impact that I can do. Because a lot of us don't know an impact that we can do to help with bullying prevention or even anything else. And I've come a long way since I was 12 years old thinking, hmm, what can I do with bullying? And this is what I've learned, the impact that I can do. So now here are some graphs and statistics of some recent bullying over the years. And most of it is because of cyberbullying because the pandemic kind of caused everyone to go to social media. And that kind of helps kids be able to hide behind the screen. But I'm able to teach them that no type of bullying is okay and that we need to use social media as an outlet to help with kindness and be able to spread love instead of hate. And so now moving on to what you all can do. Well, first you can help turn this into a full in-school program and you can help spread the message while creating your own impact in your own society. And you can also help connect me through schools, whether it's virtual or having me go into them with the initiatives. And lastly, you can support this program all the way to making a difference in the entire state. To conclude, Connected Kindness is an anti-bullying program with two initiatives. And my mottos are kindness matters and kindness is power. And this only teaches how to positive and love and unity to prepare our younger generation for their future. And we can only further this with your help to do this. So here's some contact info. I do have a website where there's some great resources for you to look at. Um, and there's also submission form where you can submit any resources that you know of or to submit through that way of me being able to get into schools. And then I do have social media where I post a lot about this because everyone's on social media. And so those are the two ones I use. And then my emails are there, my personal one and my mom's. And those are the best ways to contact me. So thank you guys so much for your time and that is all.
Thank you so much. Addison, we appreciate you being here with us this evening and wish you all the best as you continue to represent Harrisburg.
Thank you.
I would like to invite Addison to our youth council and present your information. I think it'd be great for other students in the community to be able to hear from a fellow student how well you're doing and how kindness does win.
We'll get you, get you in contact so we can get that set up. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We will move on to the public comment section of this evening. Does anyone wishing to address town council may do so during this. You just need to state your name and address for the record. Be courteous and do not repeat what has already been said. Please keep your comments courteous in nature and not personal. I would like to make note that if you are speaking this evening on the fiscal year 2023 budget ordinance, the annexation and rezoning of the portion of the parcel off of Stallings Road or the rezoning of the property on Reed Lane, there is a separate public hearing for that later this evening. So I would encourage you to hold those comments until then. See, we'll take those that are in person and then we'll go to online. I've got, it looks like Chris Robusto and Benji Lehman noted that this is for the next one. Um, is there an Iris Stafford in the audience that would like to make public comments? Is there anyone else in the audience that's not speaking on the budget? Come on, come on up and if you'll come up to the podium and just state your name and address for the record, please.
Hello, members. My name is Charles Brock. I live in Stallings Farm 3733. Been a resident for over 20 years now. I'm very concerned with the budget that's going to be voted on tonight. I believe it's too much.
Did, did you want to speak more about that during the public comments for?
Oh, I thought you said that's what this was. No, I'm sorry. I misunderstood.
That's okay. Yeah, that we're going to have something separate for that after the presentation. We'll call you back up then. Is there anyone online that would like to speak other than on the budget or the two other public hearing items? I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you. Bruce, Bruce, if you were online, you can unmute and just state your name and address for the record.
Can you hear me?
I can.
Okay, my name is Bruce Gibbs. I'm an 8002 Wyman Court. I was going to talk about the tax increase two years ago. Can you still hear me?
I can. Um, if you could hang on to that, we are going to have a public hearing specifically for the budget and that would probably be a better time to, to make those comments and we can go back to you then.
Okay.
Is there anyone else? Okay. We'll move on to our consent agenda. There was one modification made at the beginning. So is there a motion on the floor to approve the consent agenda as presented this evening? So motion on the floor, is there a second? All in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Communications, we will go to our town manager.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. Couple of things to, to note for this evening. Um, I did want to give a shout out to our staff, both our fire and public work staff. I've got a dozen or more emails from residents on their storm response. As you guys know, a few weeks ago, we had a tornado kind of come through town, take out a lot of trees, storm damage, home damage. Fortunately, we didn't have anybody injured. Um, but our folks were out there immediately within about a couple of hours. We had all the roads cleared. Um, everybody's houses secured and our residents were very, very grateful for that. And we've been spending the past three weeks, Mallory cleaning up still all of that debris. So we rented a chipper and we're handing all that in-house. So I just wanted to recognize our, our fire and public works folks for the exceptional job they did during that event. Also want to mention, um, we have one employee, Clay Heath, who, uh, got his professional engineering license this month. So Clay will be the third PE here at the town after I was the first and Mallory was the second and now Clay. So, uh, we're, we're glad to have another qualified professional engineer on staff and he's a fantastic asset to the town. Departures. So this will be last meeting for my good friend across the aisle over there, Sushil Nepal. Sushil and I have been working together here nearly four years and, uh, both as the town engineer, as the public works and engineering director, and now as a town manager. So, um, Sushil is going to be leaving for greener pastures. He's going to a bigger city and I assume a bigger paycheck. So we, we're proud of him. Um, I'll certainly miss you Sushil and, uh, I appreciate everything that you've taught me and your time here. And certainly thank you for all the hard work, dedication and friendship that you've been able to offer. So thank you, Sushil. Um, Lee's not going to do the job all by himself though. Uh, we did, we do have a, uh, an interim, uh, Mr. Zach Gordon, who's in the back of the room back here. This is, he's, uh, he's scoping out the terrain. I don't know if this was the, uh, the best meeting for us to, to invite him to as the first one. But I think Sushil's first meeting he attended was the Harmony subdivision rezoning. So, uh, this will be better than that for what that's worth. But Zach has a extraordinarily impressive resume, certainly knows his stuff and will be helping us as we move along here and select a permanent replacement for the planning director position. Also, last time we'll see April for a little while. Anyway, um, April is due to bring another baby into the Harrisburg family here pretty soon. So, uh, her due date is before the next council meeting and I'm sure she, she can't wait. So, um, you know, she'll be out on maternity for a while, certainly, you know, plugging in where she can. Uh, Lee and April are both working on an interim replacement as well so that we can continue the operations while she's out. Couple of, uh, his questions or comments that I need a little bit of direction on. So we have, uh, planning and zoning board appointments coming up. I think that's on the agenda tonight to extend those terms until we can get those filled. I've mentioned in the reports back to you guys that I'm looking for and I've spoken to some of you, some direction or at least two council members that would like to sit in on interview process with the planning and zoning board. I think it's important that the, that that board that makes a recommendation to this council has alignment on the ultimate choices on that. I think the only way to do that based on what I've gotten feedback from is to make sure the council is, uh, basically on the same page as it comes to the interview process. So, um, you can make that decision at the end of tonight. Certainly it doesn't have to be a formal appointment at a meeting here. But the sooner the better because those appointments, um, need to be filled and those interviews are going to be coming up rather quickly. Any questions on that?
I would just like to make the recommendation that the, uh, primary liaison and alternate liaison be part of that interview process since they are familiar with the planning and zoning and what goes on.
Yeah, and that's certainly, um, that's certainly the easiest path forward is saying, you know, the folks that are already the liaisons to those boards would, would do that and then report back to council prior to the appointments. Anything else? Okay, who are the two? I know Rodney's the primary.
No, he's the primary.
Oh, you're the primary and you, so, so there we got it. Ian and Rodney will participate in those and we'll get you guys plugged into that process. The June planning and zoning meeting is canceled for lack of topics, nothing to discuss at that meeting. And town center paving, our secondary, we do a spring repaving that will start Monday. So we'll start, uh, and really finish that. What would that take? Now, like a week?
They're going to start the paving project Monday. They're going to be the town center last.
Okay.
But we'll probably be no one.
And they'll finish up our paving for the year and we'll start right back up in the fall with next year's paving. Stallings Road Roundabout, uh, which seems to be a topic at every, every council meeting at this point will actually close uh, June 16th and that will be constructed. So I think the end date on that is mid-August. I don't have it right off the top of my head, but it's before school. That's in, is their requirement. Ron's giving me a questioning look, so. It, it will be open for the period of that, uh, kindergartner orientation program enclosed at other times. And that's a keypad gated thing. And I believe our folks are going to open that and close it right now.
Yeah, we're going to have some there just to make sure that the school, there, everybody's gone before we close the gate. But working with that resident, he didn't want to keep that gate closed. And then fire, of course, has access all the time.
And, uh,
But excuse me, that means though that it is closed there right in front of the entrance to the school.
Yes.
The whole two months.
Yep. I want to catch you in there. Call me somewhere else. Um, the last thing here and, and some of council know this, um, you had may have been paying attention. At the most recent county commissioner meeting, uh, there was discussion about the new library location. And we've discussed this many times here at the council level and this is, you know, something that's far off into the future. However, land planning for things like that start soon. The county is looking to acquire property to move the library to another location in Harrisburg. We've had several discussions about moving it somewhere here within the core of Harrisburg, be it town center, old Harrisburg, um, just outside the park system. But there are a couple of locations that are not in the core of Harrisburg. Unless there's any objection from this council based on my conversations and, uh, with everybody here and certainly with councils in the past and just with community. It's always been a preference to keep the library in the core of Harrisburg, not to a rural location and not necessarily needing to be coupled with the senior center, which is the county's, um, plan. So with your permission, I'd like to write that, um, official letter to the commissioners and express our desire to keep the library within the core of Harrisburg. And they are well aware of my position on it and they're also aware that we offered to participate financially to make that happen. Understanding that, uh, land prices are quite a bit higher in the core of Harrisburg than they are out in the rural areas. But I do think it's, it's critical and, and very important as, as a community to keep your library in a place where you can do multiple things. One of the reasons our library is so special and leads the county in almost all statistics as far as usage is because there's more to do at that library than just go to the library. Uh, parents take their kids there for activities, then they go to the park. They go to the splash pad and then they go to programming. And our library really is a family library. And, um, I think, you know, when you look at the library system, um, that proves out and that's why they need to build a larger library here in Harrisburg, but moving it outside of the core of the city, I think would be a mistake. And I want to reiterate to that commission so they know that before they make any planning decisions, which they plan to discuss again June 20th. So I'd like to get that letter out before then. Is there any opposition to that? Okay. And that's it for my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Rob. Brian? I didn't forget you this time. Brian will present our finance monthly report.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. A very brief, um, finance report for you this month. We'll go right into the revenue and expense dashboard for operations. Uh, as you can see here for the general fund, we've reached 100% of anticipated revenues. Uh, that is supported by about 103% on tax collections. We had a little bit of a, um, reserve in there, not knowing how the year would be coming off of COVID. But, uh, so we've essentially reached 100% of our assessment and 103% of our budget. Uh, the water and sewer fund is at about 87%. We have a month and a half, uh, left to bill in water and sewer. So that should come up right to about 99 or 100% by the time the year is closed out. And the stormwater fund is also right on target at 92%. Looking down through the departmental expenditures for the general government, uh, all the departments have come back into the green and are in good shape anywhere ranging from 35% up to about 86, 87 on that list. And moving over to the remainder of our general fund departments as well as water, sewer and stormwater. Um, all the departments are in the green here. So if there are no questions on any particular department, we'll move on past that. Can you see that salaries townwide are at 84% as we sit at 92% of the fiscal year? So that takes us into our project dashboard. For our single year projects, we're projects that we, uh, hope are single year projects. We have the deputy office expansion. Um, the interior of this building is complete and they are working out of that office. Uh, the only thing left is to work on the ramp in the parking lot that you see underway right now. Um, wanted to mention two projects. Wanted to mention two projects that moved down to complete. The Harris Depot Post Office Rehab has been finished, as well as the Town Hall ADA Concrete Compliance. That resulted in three different ramp systems being added to the exterior of this building on both sides and the front of Town Hall. That takes us to our multi-year projects in design. You know, these, these progress as we expect, month to month, on, on design and engineering projects. I did just want to point out that the sidewalks for Stallings Road have jumped up to about halfway on their design and engineering. These are our projects under construction. The Caldwell Road sidewalk, sidewalk project is at 98%. It's been sitting there really close to being done for a while. The project itself is done, but NC DOT has requested that we do a couple more modifications before finishing that project out, so staff is working with NC DOT on that. And the 2122 waterline project, as well as Sequoia Hills and Farm Mill Waterline Loop, have both gotten mobilized and construction is underway there. These are our equipment projects for the year. No comments here. We have one generator that's on hold, but that's going to be picking up at the beginning of the next fiscal year, and all the other equipment projects are complete for the year. Essentially, the same story on our vehicles. We are left with the four passenger vehicles under fire that have been received, but are waiting on a lot of the additional components and accessories to be added. And then, of course, the ladder truck is in manufacturing right now, which we saw pictures of last month. And lastly, our professional services projects, the three main projects we had this year are completed, and the retail recruitment study is going to be revisited as more of an economic development project in the next fiscal year. Other things going on in finance right now, interim field work for our audit for fiscal year '22 is underway right now, and that is going very well. And our ARPA update, no change in the amount that we've allocated out of the $5.2 million. So, still just a deputy office expansion, and then the employee retention and sign-on bonuses, which leaves us with the $4.5 million to appropriate. I'd be glad to answer any questions. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Next, we will have our distinguished Lieutenant Meesmer with our law enforcement update this evening. Sorry, I was going in order.
Council Mayor, I'll just start off with the numbers first, and I've got a whole list of things to bring up to you. It was a pretty busy month. This, last month, we had 3,698 law enforcement-related activities, 2,801 security checks. That's where we're going through your neighborhoods, your businesses, checking your locks, trying to be proactive and be in your neighborhoods. We had 514 traffic stops with a non-emergency response time, meaning no blue light, no siren, making it to you in six minutes and 35 seconds, which is very, very fast. Of course, if we have to turn on blue light and siren, we'd be much faster, but certain laws require us to have certain types of crimes. So, last month, we talked about breaking and entering. Those two individuals are now in custody. We also talked about property damages. We're up. Those two juveniles have been petitioned and taken into custody from another state. We're bringing them back. They are residents of Harrisburg, but they have been placed into custody and will be standing charges for quite a bit of property damage throughout the subdivisions in Harrisburg. Another thing we did last month, we put close to 1,450 juveniles through distracted driving and DWI classes, showing them what it would be like in golf carts and vehicles, including our F-250, to drive with the goggles on to see how far they actually travel, supervised while they're trying to text, et cetera, hopefully making them a little bit safer drivers as the years go on. Another thing on June the 7th, I know a lot of y'all heard it. We had bomb squad training at one of the houses in Harrisburg. It was fantastic joint training with the fire department, along with EMS, our bomb squad, and other divisions of the sheriff's department doing high-risk entries in critical situations. Another thing that we were able to do is, I'm rather proud of this, is a traffic stop that was made by one of our Harrisburg officers. The gentleman was found to have a heavy amount of fraud material in his car. And as we all know, fraud is a major problem in the United States these days, and North Carolina and Cabarrus County is no different. This gentleman had everything from numerous fake IDs, tax documents, W-2s, W-9s, counterfeit money, you name it, he had it all. It was a big enough hit to where the Secret Service is actually gonna probably take that case from us and prosecute him on a federal level. And last but not least, July 4th, I know a few of y'all have a question about how many we're gonna have staffing. We will have close to 40 deputies inside that park at all times. On top of that, of course, we'll have our bomb units, we'll have our narcotics dogs. It's gonna be a pretty large show of force like we have every year, but that's about how many it takes to put on the parade the night of the third and the night of the fourth, about 40 deputies each. And that does not include the deputies that are currently working, that will still be answering your calls for service. That's not a break in that. That's just the part of contract of having a large agency that can pull those kind of numbers. Does anybody have any questions for me?
I've got one for you.
Yes, sir.
You and I have had conversations before, and more recently, at the security presentation, or the presentation at the park. What is the status of QT with regards to drug arrests? Is there, is it heavy there? Is it?
QT is one area, along with Harris Teeter, along with several of those businesses through there, and it's not the businesses themselves, it's just a convenient place off of 49 for folks to do drug deals. They'll call a drug dealer in Charlotte. Charlotte gentleman will say, I want to meet you at one of these public locations. They will do a deal in the parking lot, and that's normally where we catch them is during those deals, setting up with undercover cars, et cetera, waiting on them. Is it a hotspot at times? Yes. But it does come and go, because after you do numerous arrests there, like we did, I want to say, two to three months ago, the word gets out that we're on to them, and they will move on to another business at another section of the county. But it's secular. It's gonna happen again and again. It's just a convenient spot near 485 on a four-lane highway. They can go down Caldwell. It's a good place to actually do a drug transaction in their minds.
Do you, do you find any issue on Rocky River Road or deeper into Harrisburg?
Not as, not as much as that area. Generally, it's gonna be closer to the county line is where we see a lot of our crimes. Obviously, we have homegrown crimes here in Harrisburg that are Harrisburg residents, but the sheer bulk of our suspects that we end up catching mostly come from Charlotte and/or Concord or Canucks.
Thank you.
Yes. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Lieutenant Meesmer. Next up for our fire department update, Chief Dunn. And duly noted, I will reverse that order at the next meeting.
Well, see, he's, he's up this game even further. Now he's got a PowerPoint up there. He keeps making me look bad. Our monthly report for fire services, we responded to 217 incidents during the month of May. Four of those were structured fires, just some of the highlights. 14 of those were motor vehicle accidents with injuries. Some other alarms in there. Our average response time was four minutes and 13 seconds, which is pretty consistent for prior months. Interesting, this month, actually, our busiest station was Station 2, which is on Rocky River Road. That's our newest station, so. But that's beginning to make a lot of sense with all the residents that are in that area. Some of the things we participated in, as Lieutenant Meesmer mentioned, the training we took place, joint training with them, was very beneficial, I think, for all agencies involved. We had a fire officer one class. We had some leadership classes last month. We had instructor classes, so that our individuals in-house can begin teaching firefighter and EMS classes as well. And then, as the town manager mentioned, on May 23rd, we did respond to a confirmed EF1 tornado that came through, started in Mecklenburg County, then came through Cabarrus County. So, emergency management did respond to the scene as well. And what they're confirming is, there, there were six residents that were, and I'm sure everybody's seen the picture, that were majorly damaged. I'm sure there were many other neighborhoods that probably had tree damage or gutter damage or something like that, but Camelot by far took the, took the biggest damage. So, luckily, no injuries. I don't know if anybody's heard the story, the, probably the most damaged house was a veteran that was actually at the hospital, and the tree came right through where he normally sits. So, luckily, he was somewhere else during that, so. We did participate in a stop-to-be class at Hickory Ridge High School, and we did participate in a field day at Harrisburg Elementary as well, which had some fire prevention activities, and we partnered with Concord on that as well. They have some new, new fire prevention blowups and things like that, so that, very successful event, so. Busy month for fire, and I'll field any questions.
When will you guys see the, or if you have an update, the caution light at Station 3?
So, we're working on the caution light at Station 1 at this point, and Station 3 is next year, CFP, I think. So, then we'll be working on that. So, like everything else, we, we got bids. We had to get updated bids for Station 1. Working with DOT to get everything. It's a real tight area right there, so trying to get the polls up and everything is, it's been a little bit longer than what we anticipated.
And thank you again to your staff. I know Rob mentioned it, but we do appreciate you guys being up there. I know some of those folks real well, and ran into several of them on Friday night, and they sang you guys as praises. They sing Public Works as praises. They couldn't say enough about you guys, so.
Well, we appreciate it. The whole town did, as a partnership, so. All right. That is.
Thank you, Chief Dunn.
Yes.
Just a couple, Mayor's comments. Each year, the Charlotte Business Journal introduces rising stars through their awards program, and last month, it was actually their 29th year, the signature award program spotlight individuals, 40 individuals under the age of 40, who are making a difference in the region. And although he is quite modest and not one for the limelight, I would like to extend our congratulations to Councilman Ian Patrick for being named one of the 40 under 40. Council. Many, many of those recipients are recognized for their professional and civic accomplishments, but in Councilman Patrick's case, he was recognized for both. He has used his talents and time to demonstrate incredible professional accomplishments, volunteer service in his professional industry and to his community, and has made meaningful contributions to our local and regional growth and investment. So, congratulations again. You're welcome. I'd also like to recognize our town manager, Rob Donham, on his graduation last week from the 2022 Leadership Cabarrus Class. It's a program designed to educate and enhance the awareness of assets, resources, and needs within Cabarrus County. He attended monthly classes, I believe it was September 3, May. Does that sound about right? So, we want to congratulate Mr. Donham on his leadership milestone. Congratulations. We had a great crowd at the Rockin' the Bird concert. That was the second of the series this past Saturday, and we are looking forward to seeing every one of our independent festivities on July 3rd and 4th, and as well as on August 13th, which is our third concert series at Rockin' the Bird. So, look forward to seeing everyone there. Next, we'll move into council comments. Again, we'll have more conversation around budget, but if there's any general comments that council would like to make, now's the time.
Mayor, I have a couple, if you don't mind.
Of course.
Just like it's already been said, the tornado that came through, I'm so thankful no one was injured. A big shout out to the public's work and the fire. I was over there. I mean, Corey and his staff were great, and the neighbors. You know, it was so nice to drive in. I was in Charlotte, then I drove in my neighborhood, and then I later that evening went to Camelot. And to see all the neighbors pulling together and helping each other thrilled many souls. Even Ian Patrick, Councilman Patrick was out there helping with his chainsaw to, to cut things down, so we know why he was able to get one of those Star Awards. But many residents were so thankful that, that they knew all they had to get was their debris from their backyard to the front yard, and the town of Harrisburg would take care of that debris. Some of them had quotes of $20,000 or greater to, to get that debris removed. One of them was the veteran on the house that was already spoken to, and they were very grateful. You know, they didn't know where they were gonna get the money. So, I'm just thankful that the town was able to do that. A shout out to everybody that picked that up. I'd also like to move on to, this week I was able to spend, like, or last week, with the town manager about three hours, and we went over several areas in, in the, in the town, and we, we talked about Futa Creek, where I just talked about the, about the tornado, and some of those residents there are concerned about all the water that's coming down through the creek. And now that the trees have fallen into the creek, they're worried about backing up and flooding. So, that's one thing that we talked about. We talked about the traffic backup on Silens. A resident has talked about all the traffic that's coming down Robinson Church that's gonna turn left onto Veterans Bridge. We talked about maybe where another resident said, can we make that double lane turn now onto veterans? So, he's gonna look into that. We talked about the striping again of the line from Veterans onto 49. And we talked around amongst other things as well, but I want to do a shout out that I truly appreciate being able to sit with the town manager and go do that and have a discussion and look at things around Harrisburg. I'd like to give a brief update of the Sustainability Advisory Board. In their past two meetings, they recognized elementary students that were sifting through recyclables and how they had created birthday projects. So, their last two meetings, they were able to share that, and they were excited. So, the advisory board is hoping at some point that some of those students can come share something or be recognized during a town council meeting. Also, the board wanted to be sure, and I've already let staff know, that with the planning director's departure, that a staff liaison would be put in place. Also, they wanted to be sure that the information that gets out about the fall Arbor Day planning, which will be happening in October, that that's getting out to the residents, and they know that they can go out and order those trees. And last, they wanted to see about getting the cost of what it costs to have a mailing, the Waterville mailing on the back of it. So, there's just a couple of things that I wanted to bring to everyone's attention.
Thank you, Councilman Dullinger.
So, again, Public Works Fire Department, thank you. We heard so much from the residents about everything that you guys did, and we're grateful, grateful to have you. On Saturday, June 18th, will be the Juneteenth Parade in Concord, and it starts at 11:00 a.m. In addition to that, on June 25th, there will be another Juneteenth celebration at the Marvin Caldwell Park from 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., and I believe additional information has come to the town about that.
Thank you, Donham. Councilman Smith?
I just wanted to remind you guys, I sent in your email a reminder that NC DOT is looking at distributed funds up to an 80% match on any projects. We can get to them. There's a certain criteria, but it basically is involving pedestrian and bike. But Phil Conrad and Brett Knite from NC DOT did say that they could be of assistance if needed, so. Hopefully, we can get a shovel-ready project for these guys. 21.7 billion, a lot of money. I know we've got some concerns out here.
Are we, are we on top of that? Yeah, Councilman Smith has sent that to me. That's been distributed throughout staff, and we're investigating what projects meet the criteria for that.
Awesome. Rick? Thank you, council. Maybe into the public hearing portion, before we actually go to public comments, our town manager, Rob, is going to give a presentation on our fiscal year 2023 budget ordinance.
See, I shared my screen in advance. That way, I didn't delay you. Good evening, Mayor, council, community, staff. Really excited, proud, honored to present this budget to you, finally, the final budget presentation for the 2023 fiscal year. I know that everybody on council saw a very similar presentation 30 days ago. There are some modifications in tonight's presentation to incorporate a lot of the feedback that we got in the past 30 days, so. We didn't have a ton of feedback, but I did have a handful of residents reach out with particular questions. So, I've tried to share those throughout tonight's presentation for, you know, general audience consumption and for So I've tried to share those throughout tonight's presentation for, you know, general audience consumption and for council. Even though, you know, we've spent a massive amount of time on this, there's always, you know, a little question here or there that we can always clarify. And council, please bear with me again, a lot of it is the same. But wait till you hear me do it this time. It's much better. So just an overview on the budget. The budget process began in December. That begins at the staff level. So we go over the budget at a staff level with our department managers to develop what are the department's anticipated needs for the upcoming budget year and what will be their requests. The official public meetings with council started in January. That's where we review those manager requests and we start to basically prioritize the projects and needs. The entire process was nine budget meetings and one general council meeting. And we use those meetings to gather input and get direction from council. All told, about thirty hours of open discussion and debate. Those have been available approximately a week at most after each meeting. So those have been available over the past six months for public viewing. I was hired as the town manager in February, so about halfway through the process. That caused some challenges and, and some changes, but at that point, there were some strategic changes implemented at the March budget meeting. The projected revenues and expenditures for all the funds in the town were available in early April and that helped us finally define the majority of the proposed budget. The managers recommended budgets intended to reflect the direction and input from the town council and from the staff to meet the needs of the community for the upcoming year. This budget was presented to council and the public in advance of tonight's hearing in order to be able to solicit that feedback prior to tonight. So what are the requirements of a town budget? We have several new council people. I'm sure there are lots of folks in the audience here tonight. This may be their first council meeting or their first in a while. So the budget requirements are pretty straightforward. North Carolina general statute requires municipalities to prepare an annual budget. And those budgets have to propose a, a plan for raising and spending money for the specified programs, functions, and objectives in all government activities during the fiscal year. The budget has to be balanced. We are not allowed to do deficit spending in local government level. So the revenues have to equal the expenses. Fiscal year is what we operate on and that runs from July first. So this budget will be July one, twenty twenty-two through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. The town manager serves as the budget officer. The town manager is responsible for the preparation, presentation, and the oversight of the budget to ensure the intent of the town council is met. The way we operate our budget is a funded accounting system where funds are restricted for certain purposes and generally revenues are restricted for those same purposes. Our primary account is the general fund. This is the most flexible account. That's funded mostly through property and sales tax revenues and that includes the expenses for public safety, streets, environmental services, which is generally our solid waste trash services, parks and recreation, planning and zoning, engineering, and then general administration of the government. We also have enterprise funds. Enterprise funds operate under a business system, just like any other utility. Think of this as a, as a utility system with restricted funds. These, these typical funds are financed through charges to the customers. Whatever service you're providing, you charge a fee for that and that is a self-sustaining fund. We don't use tax revenue for operations and these funds include water and sewer fund as well as stormwater fund. Then we have special restricted funds, which accounts for money similar to enterprise funds, but maybe a grant or another special program. Capital reserve funds, these are projects we reserve to do future capital projects and they are limited to that source or they are limited to that use by the town. Powell Bill Funds, which is funding directly from the state of North Carolina and that has to be used on maintaining our public right of way streets. A special revenue fund, as we discussed, Brian mentioned earlier, the American Rescue Plan Act funds distributed to towns that have a special purpose related to the COVID pandemic. Our capital expenses, these are different than our operational expenses. All purchases of long-term assets, equipments, buildings, anything over five thousand dollars is considered a capital purchase. We track large expenses and that helps the town to plan, prioritize, and prepare for, you know, the bigger stuff that we do. Large future expenses, they're not a part of the normal day to day. Think a, you know, roundabout program, a traffic signal, road resurfacing, these are all capital improvements as well as our smaller stuff. Buying a pickup truck would also fall in that. The town has implemented a ten-year capital improvement plan in conjunction with financial models and those project future revenues and expenses. That tool allows the town to understand what are our long-term outcomes from those capital expenditures. And this was really a, a progressive change and this sounds like it just, yeah, that makes sense, right? We plan out what we're going to spend over a long period of time, but this isn't as common in local government as it would appear. And the town adopted this in twenty eighteen. I thank Brian Lee, who has worked on this and maintained this since that time. And that really transformed how we do our budget development process and it continues to be a guide for current and future financial decisions. So what are the core budget priorities and objectives that came out of this process? So establishing a budget that meets the current future needs of the town is our primary objective. Continuing to utilize that ten-year C I P plan and the financial models, maintaining a healthy reserve savings account for general fund, water and sewer and stormwater funds, and finding the most efficient methods to operate. We're always looking for ways to do things a little better and that's something that we're, we're always doing here at the town, just constant improvement. And searching for other cost-saving measures where we're looking for revenue generation. And Councilman Smith, you know, mentioned a source earlier. If we have a long-term C I P that's out there five years that we've planned on paying general fund for and we're able to get a grant for that, that's just as good as any other funding source that we have. So that opens up money and allows us to move on to some other things that may have been out of reach. And also priority is just to ensure the town's prepared to weather the unknown. Inflation, labor and material shortages and other economic fluctuations are taken into account in this budget. And ultimately, this budget sets us on a path to do, you know, further things. This isn't a budget that I say is a stagnant budget. Certainly, it's an impressive budget, but being that we only had a few months to work on it, I would call it a bridge budget and I do believe this is a bridge to Harrisburg's future. So budget variables and impacts during the process, you know, we'd, we'd mentioned some of those already, but transition of town leadership was a significant impact on the budget process. But a newly elected mayor, two new council members and several in their first term that are early on in the budgeting experience level and manager, brand new February, that had to put all this together. So those were certainly impacts, getting all the personalities, getting everybody's visions aligned and making sure that we come out of this at the end with something that had strong consensus. Steady residential growth, both a, a problem and an asset for the town. Strong sales tax was another asset that we were able to fold into this budget. And also just creating a budget that carries the town strategically into the future was a, was a hurdle and an impact that we think we accomplished, but certainly required a lot of meetings, a lot of late nights with each of you and I appreciate that. So just continuing, what, 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 what did we do during the budget process that was significant? That I would like everybody to take note of here. And some of this comes from some of the feedback that we'd received over the last month, but when I say, you know, when I came in, in February and made those strategic implementations in March, what did we do? So one of the concerns that our staff has had prior to inflation ramping up and prior to some of the warnings about, you know, economic circumstances changing in the next year or two, these are things that we wanted to recession proof ourselves from. So from a town standpoint, we had seven new employee requests that were previously planned and called for in our staffing plan. And we cut that to one employee. We basically said, we only have one employee that is an absolute necessity for this year. And we also took a look at our capital request for this year. Those came in at three point eight million was the request from our department heads and that was cut down to one point six million for the year. Long-term, if you look at our general fund, you know, this is the one supported by our taxes. We cut or delayed eight point six million dollars over the first three years of that. So if you look at twenty-three through twenty-five on our financial model, you'll see that above and beyond what was requested, we reduced that eight point six million. And from a townwide, all budgets considered, you look at the first three years, that was reduced thirteen million dollars over those first three years. Townwide, the ten-year C I P over that entire ten-year period went from ninety million to eighty-two million, reduced that eight million. And that's a, that's a complete cut. That's not a delay. That's not moving something to year six that was year one. Those are things that we were able to eliminate and reprioritize so that we could focus on core services. That brings me to the next bullet point of why we did it. So one of the things we're very proud of here as a staff is that we provide excellent, excellent services to the residents at a very attractive cost. Like when we heard earlier, the Public Works Department and the Fire Department and their response during a tornado event, that's what our residents have come to expect. That's what our managers have come to expect from our employees and that's always what we're striving for. So as we move forward into a more uncertain economic future, it was important to us to focus and make sure that we're able to continue to provide the core services at highest levels before we expand into anything else. This budget does that. So we focus on those core services and really focus on maintaining the staff that we have. There are some challenges, you know, facing us ahead. We have a national employee shortage. We're seeing that. I think if you go to a fast food restaurant or a sit-down restaurant or a doctor's office or try to get into your dentist, you'll realize that there aren't that many employees compared to the amount of jobs available. And the town staff here, just due to that wage inflation issue that we've had, is roughly nine to ten percent below the market average for the region already. Those are things that we'll have to deal with as a management team, but we do believe, again, this budget allows us to focus on retaining and attracting employees to continue the high-quality services that we already have. And then just giving ourselves some flexibility for unknown economic conditions, wage inflation, consumer price index inflation. If the economy were to cool off enough to address those first couple of things, you may have a recession. We're certainly fifteen years into an economic expansion, which is unheard of. So we don't want to ignore these things and we're well-prepared to tackle those into the future by putting together a budget that is already cut back as much as we can cut it back and still supports all the core services that our residents expect. And also a prioritization was placed on enhanced public safety and infrastructure. So these are proactive investments that pay off in the long term, always much, always much cheaper to fix something before it's broke, right? Before the roads start to crumble, we like to patch them. We like to resurface them before your water lines are actually breaking. We like to replace them before crime is a problem. We like to address that. So all of those are reflected in this budget. So we'll cut to the chase. Why the room's so full, right? Here's the, here's the meat and potatoes of the budget and we'll have plenty of time to discuss this tonight and during the Q and A session. The fiscal twenty-three budget is prepared with a tax increase of eight cents. That rate increase goes from thirty-five and a half cents to forty-three and a half cents per hundred dollars valuation. And the increase in that tax rate provides a town with the resources we'll need to fully fund and expand it and enhance law enforcement division with the Cabarrus County Sheriff's Office. That'll go from seventeen employees to twenty-eight total officers. This also provides the town with the help that we'll need as a staff to act quickly on larger capital projects and transportation, economic development and parks, and to be able to weather those inflationary pressures and wages operating in capital expenses. You see on the right-hand side of the screen there, the planned rollout, the four-year rollout of the enhanced sheriff's division here within the town. First year would be a captain and a dedicated traffic unit to address, you're probably what is the most complained about issue, which is our traffic issues throughout the town. Those also, those traffic incidents also lead us to the more serious incidents. As you heard Lieutenant Meesmer speak about earlier, you may pull somebody over. All of a sudden you realize, hey, they've got a lot of fraud material. We pull somebody over, we realize they have enough heroin for a distribution bust. Those are the types of things that that traffic unit aids us in. Eventually, though, you get enough of those, you need a crime reduction unit. These are detectives and sergeants that can follow up and build cases and take them to the prosecutor so that we are not just passing these on. Right? We catch somebody, but then they're out of here and they're back doing it again very quickly. Third year, we had the patrol deputies. These are for the expansion of, you know, the same things that we were doing in year one and two, but to a broader extent as we bring more neighborhoods on and as crime just continues to pressure from the, from the surrounding urbanized areas as well as administrative support in year five, or in year four. So the question I've, I've had mostly as we've prepared this budget early on was, you know, where did this come from, right? Why are we talking about policing? How do we get where we're at? What's the history of it? So it really comes from this. So we did a police feasibility study. When I say we, the town of Harrisburg, I've been here five years, so I'll always refer to the town as we, but as a manager role, I guess I wasn't a, a part of this, but in a different role I was here. So the town did a police feasibility study that was finalized in twenty twenty in September. And this took a look at, as the town grows and we're starting to approach twenty thousand residents, we also cover the E T J pushes us over twenty thousand. And, and certainly haven't had that slow down. At what point do we need our own police department? We've, we've contracted with the sheriff's department for an officer here or there. When the two that have been assigned here were not adequate, we've kind of grown that over the years, but at some point towns require police departments. So the question became, when is that? And when it does happen, what are the costs? How do you roll it out? How long does it take? So this police study was commissioned. David O. Graham and associates did this and they looked at police style or philosophy that the town would need first. And ultimately settled on community-oriented policing model. This is a model where you're really reacting to the problem. So it's not just a one-size-fits-all community policing. This is identify the specific, specific problems for your community, develop programs to address that and invest in that particular mode. That requires a all-in-house functions. If you were to do a police department, that would include everything except dispatch, which you would pay for to contract out. K-9 bomb squad, SWAT, major crimes, animal control, that would still be going through Cabarrus County Sheriff's Office through a partnership. And the minimum staffing level for Harrisburg Police Department was recommended to be thirty-seven officers. So with the organizational structure, this fly is going to try to steal my thunder here. This would be with the organizational structure. I know it's small up there, but it's not a recommendation. Otherwise I'd make it bigger. But ultimately, when and if Harrisburg decides to go with its own police department, this is what the organization or struck organizational structure would look like with an executive leadership team of a, of a chief, internal affairs, administration, obviously an attorney, captains to run two separate divisions. It would also require a police station, right? We've never had a police department. A police department would have to run out of a new state of art police station and that safety complex, if we combined it with fire, which is something we've looked at as the most cost-effective option, would run us somewhere in eight to twelve million dollar construction cost. So how does a town go about making that decision? There, there are luckily some guidelines for that. According to the U S Department of Justice, there are some specific issues Harrisburg should consider when deciding if they want to start their own police department. The first one, I don't like that highlight. The first one is dissatisfaction with current services or costs. That has not been our experience. It's always been a satisfactory arrangement with the sheriff's department, but there are several in here that I'd like to highlight that do lead you down that road of it's, it's, are you approaching a time for a police department? And the first one is local government, community want more control, right? Back to that community-oriented policing model. Are your Right back to that community oriented policing model. Are your challenges different than Concord's? Are our challenges different than Kannapolis? Are they different than the university area? Are they different than Charlotte at large? And most people would agree that the community wants more direct control over how we want our public safety to operate. We want unique services. Um the community wants more personalized services. That certainly fits. Um recent and continuing population growth. That certainly fits the model for Harrisburg. Are we a growing suburb of a growing city? I mean, that, that kind of hits the nail on the head with Charlotte and Harrisburg for sure. And annexation, are you growing area wise and do you need to serve that area due to annexations? Those are all reasons the U S Department of Justice says that uh you should consider developing your own police force. Another keynote on there, new departments. In this is without exception, this comes out of the study. Everyone will, will tell you this, new departments are always more expensive to set up and operate than contracting for police services. You generally get more control, you get more specialized services. But that you lose that uh uh efficiency of scale. So they're always more expensive than contracting for police services. When we did this analysis, looking at the police department, um I'll save some of the, some of the minutia. Here, but it's very expensive, right? Our current tax rate thirty five and a half cents. The tax rate necessary to support a Harrisburg Police Department is fifty five point two cents. That would be an increase of nineteen point seven cent on the current tax rate in order to start our own police department. So as a group, when we went through looking at making this decision, and this has been an ongoing. You know, analysis since probably about twenty eighteen. We've had several meetings on it with previous councils, but this council's decision making process really started. In early January, after getting uh several updates from the consultant that did the police study. And it really came down to to three options. Uh the first one, and we have this with everything that we do, there's always the option to do nothing or continue as you are. This is certainly the cheapest option. It's one point nine million a year. It does not address the decision making issues that uh that tend to be an issue for the town. Being reactive is always a little bit more expensive than proactive. So waiting for crime and addressing it later, long term tends to be a little bit more expensive. And you have some early crime patterns emerging. You could see them there, electronic goods and legal distribution, we've had a few bank robberies. Um drug busts that forced the closure of a local business. Uh murder in town and murder adjoining in a Charlotte community. Um that adjoins one of our communities. Shootings in those uh adjoining communities as well as a child pornography ring arrest here in town center. Another thing to highlight in that do nothing option is the implementation takes several years to see an effect. So as you see here, it's gonna take about four years. To get a captain on board and then to have that captain roll out the recruitment, hiring, training. And ultimately uh s- putting in service those additional deputies. The second option, um what can we do? We know Harrisburg Police Department's really expensive and. And we'll get to uh to that issue and we know that. Uh do nothing has some, has some negatives. So. The middle thing that we talked about through these budget processes was. The enhanced Cabarrus County Sheriff's Office policing option, the Harrisburg Division. Um this had a more reasonable cost at three point seven million over the long term. This, when we say long term on this, this is like a ten year solution. This gets you um certainly for the next decade, the uh direction that you want to go as far as policing. Whether Harrisburg needs a police department long term. That'll, that'll pan out. That works out a little bit different for all cities, but fortunately we do have a, a middle option. Due to the uh outstanding work that our sheriff's deputies do and the outstanding sheriff that we have here in the county. This is also a proactive approach. Implementation is certainly the fastest. We already have everything in place in order to move this forward. And this would require six cent tax increase, which is not desirable by any means, but certainly cheaper than the nineteen point seven cents for a police department. And like we said, option three was to go ahead and start moving forward with a Harrisburg Police Department. Certainly most expensive cost at seven point seven million a year. Uh more than twice the cost of the enhanced police division. Um it does address all the decision issues. Having your own police department is certainly um. What you want to do if you're serious about policing. Um that is the, the best option, but it might not be the most economical option. Uh this very proactive approach. Um implementation is very slow though. Police department would take much longer than four years to roll out. Um funding, security on that would be more difficult. Um staffing challenges would be very difficult of a future department, especially considering that. You know, I just said earlier in the report that we have a national employee shortage. Finding officers would be very expensive and time consuming. Um equipment procurement would be very challenging. We know we have shortages on goods and materials as well. So getting all the equipment that you need to staff a police department quickly would not be an easy task. Transitional issues, um county and town political turnover throughout that process will change. Because it takes that long. So, you know, anybody that uh has a change of heart and over that period of time, different. Political philosophies could create uh many issues along with that, as well as facility construction cost uncertainty. Um the inexperience and learning curve in new department, many things go wrong with that police department um option if we choose to go with that. So flip back to the previous, this is how we got to this recommendation. Um through those thirty hours of. Of talking and deliberation with this group as well as the previous council, as well as the consultant that recommended uh the police department layout. We're recommending to move forward with the expanded police division. Um this requires again, that tax increase requires four years to lay it out, but it is. Set us on that path to have a full time, full service police department. That I should say police department, full time, full service police division. Um that can address all of the issues that our community has facing us right now. And really um solidifies one of those pillars of community building. One being infrastructure, which we've done an excellent job of here at the town. I'll uh. Put plug in for myself since I used to be a public works director. So I think we're, we're very solid on the uh infrastructure arena. Um public safety is your primary and and most important responsibility as a council. This would solidify that. And your third leg is really community building and culture building. And um having those two taken care of for the next decade puts Harrisburg in an excellent position. To tackle economic development, to tackle um any economic uncertainties that come up, to take advantage. Of all the opportunities that face a, a growing new south city. Let's move on from that particular point um from the, from the sheriff uh and enhanced police division to the rest of what we do. Obviously, that's what most of uh, I think, communities probably here to talk about, and obviously that was what we talked about the most in our budget hearings. Um but we're doing a heck of a lot more than just policing here in the town. So the general fund overview in general. Um our service levels are expected to remain consistent uh with the current year. And again, I think uh. Our, our service levels are rated excellent and we, we plan to continue that. Um new budget requests that we had for this year, um. We're only gonna add the, I'm sorry, additional personnel will be added in one department. That's human resources. Uh our human resource director, he's been with us five years now with the town and uh we waited way too long to get. Our first human resource employee and we've waited way too long to get our second. So. And I tell you, she's just gonna be extremely excited when this budget is approved and we're able to move forward. Um but that is the only. Employee that we're adding a- as part of the general fund. Everything else has been either cut entirely or delayed to a future budget year. Um this budget does address the pay equity for the employees so that we can maintain the employees that we have. Very expensive uh to replace employees, especially employees that we think are doing an outstanding job. And you saw the slide before, at a minimum, just to, just to get somebody else in the door. Um when our folks leave, we probably have to pay ten to fifteen percent more to meet the market rate. In order to get somebody to fill that position, the best way to save on that. Uh that additional expense of training and, and capital cost is to retain the employees that you have. The expanded town events, this is something we take a lot of pride in here at the town. So we've, we've definitely taken a uh. You can answer. We've definitely uh taken a, a harder look at our events. These are things communities really proud of. Um they're very well attended. It's, it's one of the things we're known for is being a community. And so we're expanding our town events such as the, the fourth of July event, which is coming up right around the corner. Um. Please uh um ask somebody if, if you haven't been, this is, this is gonna be a great year. So uh Christmas tree lighting is another one that we've been ramping up in our concert series. Um investing a lot more. Into making those events larger, uh more impactful community events. We uh have an increase in park athletics and programs. Um that I don't think, uh I don't think we can add enough uh programs to fund the demand. It just seems like we have an unlimited amount of demand. For our athletics programs, which really speaks to the quality of our programs. Vehicle and heavy equipment replacements. Our uh, our folks again provide a lot of services. We talk about cleaning up the uh tornado debris. Um we also pick up grass, um leaves, general brush. Um lot of, lot of things that we provide to the residents. So we're investing in those uh equipment replacements. In order to be able to provide those services and significant, and significant operation and capital investments in our streets. To make sure that our streets remain in great shape. Um my request to the department heads when, when we uh kind of made this switch in March was to make a concerted effort. To reduce our small equipment replacements, try to take a better look at, you know, how can we extend the service life? Of the things that, that, that we are operating with and um other non mandatory expenditures. Let's get and put those off. Um and go ahead and focus on what, what we're doing well. Um invest in those things that we're doing well and prepare for other budget years as the economy shows its hand a little bit more. Here's the general fund financial model that I bragged up on uh Brian so much uh about earlier. And there's a red box around the first five years. These are the five years that we want to make sure are fiscally constrained. Um what happens in year six, seven and eight are a little bit tougher to predict. We still do it. Um but we don't necessarily put as much weight on that as we would year five, four and three. Uh if you look at this model. The objective is to not really see any red in the first five years. Red down in the uh bottom column, bottom rows uh would show a deficit. So if you look at this model and we get out to twenty thirty two, um you do have a, a deficit in year ten. And this doesn't take into account, you know, any of the changes that we would have between now and then. So is that red kind of gets a little bit more is that, that goes from year ten to nine to eight. We adjust our budget to make sure that we're accounted for that. By the time it gets to year six, we'd be making whatever changes. That we need to internally, operationally to make sure that that is not still the issue. Uh fund overview for general fund, um. New personnel requests, including the uh, the sheriff's department requests are ten in total. And we are funding four of those, three of those are the sheriff's department and the one is the uh. A human resource specialist I spoke about earlier, as well as investing in the uh. Employee benefit and retention tools in order to make sure that we're able to keep those folks here on staff doing a great job for us. Capital project expenses, um several of these totaling two point six million. Some highlights there, Harrisburg Y M C A, um investment in that to have our standalone Harrisburg Y M C A um out in Harrisburg Park. Eight hundred and thirty five thousand for road resurfacing, which is substantial investment. As well as almost six hundred thousand dollars in park and recreation projects. Here's the revenue sources uh for the general fund. Sixty one percent of this comes from our property taxes. That's generally what the council gets to make decisions on, on an annual basis. Most of the other things, charges for services, permits and fees, those are small amounts. Um and then thirty two percent comes from sales tax. What do we spend it on? Um well, primarily fire, I think fire chief left, so. Uh you can pick on him a little bit. So in the brackets, we have the previous year. And uh outside of that, we have this year and public safety, you know, accounts for about forty two percent. Of all government spending in the town of Harrisburg. So police and fire. That is, that is what you spend money on. Almost half of everything that you have goes to that. Uh this year deputies getting a little bit of a bump and that'll normalize up with the um enhancement of the police division. And uh if you look at, you know, the other big categories that you have. The park and recreation is your second largest uh investment in the town. That includes um all of your athletics, programs, maintenance of parks, capital improvements. And uh third would be uh environmental protection, which is picking up trash. I mean, that's, that's what it costs us just to uh. Have trash picked up at the house and we do that out of the general fund. We are one of the only communities that do that out of the general fund. That is, most other communities are charging a separate fee. And I'll highlight that later when we compare to the other communities. Um but roughly this year, twelve percent of. Our tax dollar goes to environmental protection. And then the other sliver is engineering down there, two percent, planning, three percent. And general government, which is all other things, finance, human resource, management, customer service uh comes in at eleven percent of the. Total expenditures. This is the one uh Councilman Dillinger is so fond of seeing, seeing how his dollars getting chopped up uh by the government. Fire, obviously the largest, but they're on the left and parks and recreation, um so on and so forth. Down to the smallest department, which is our engineering department. So property tax bill overview, this is one that I inserted based on um some questions. We, we had this in the previous. Presentation, but I wanted to expound on it um a little bit because there were, there were several questions about uh tax rates, reevaluations, things like that. So based on the forty three and a half cent tax rate, um these are the estimated bills that we have here in the chart. Um keep in mind the county evaluations currently in town are about seventy percent of market value. Uh so if your house right now, you go to Zillow and you check the price, if, if you feel like that's what you could actually sell it for. Um and your house is about four hundred and thirty thousand dollars in value, the county valuation of that is probably closer to three hundred thousand. We've taken snapshots of this over and over, but I would, I would offer anybody um. To get and look at your tax bill, see what the county says it's worth and, and see where, see where you're at now. Um and you'll see that seventy percent of market value be pretty consistent. The median valuation in Harrisburg does hit around that three hundred thousand. So that's, that's generally where we're at for evaluation and you can see the tax rate currently at thirty five and a half cents in the first row. Um I highlighted the center there and just say it, at three hundred thousand, the current tax bill, it's about a thousand sixty five dollars. This increase is two hundred and forty dollars on top of that for grand total thirteen hundred and five. And one of the discussions I had with someone, they had asked about, you know, when will that start to be collected? When, you know, most people have escrow accounts that, that go um and pay for their taxes. So. Between July one and the first escrow analysis of next year in February. Um I just broke that daily cost difference down. So you can, you can decide where, you know, you want to. Uh start looking at where that savings is, but it breaks down to about sixty five, sixty six cents a day for the additional tax increase. Um we wouldn't start collecting this until next year. So that's when the, the taxes will be due in February. And then later in August, I think those are the two tax dates, right? The February and August. And uh then your mortgage lender, generally most people are, have their stuff in escrow, mortgage lender then does a revaluation the next year. So this would probably show up on an escrow statement in March of twenty twenty four would be the first time. The homeowners would see it. So preparing for that is, is certainly something we want people to do. Uh most people just roll that into the payment and instead of paying that back. Escrow amount, or if you're like me and you like to punish yourself by paying your taxes directly instead of out of escrow. Um then you'll just start paying it right away. If you obviously, um if you have a house, maybe that's valued at seven hundred and fifty thousand or could sell for seven hundred and fifty thousand. Your valuation would be closer to five fifty, in which case. Your valuation would be closer to five fifty, in which case that, that tax increase is more substantial. It's about double that, talking about a dollar a day, dollar twenty a day. If it's a least less expensive house in Harrisburg, obviously go down two hundred and fifty thousand, it'd be about two hundred dollars a year. Maybe about fifty cents a day. So how do we, how do we gauge where our fees and services, you know, how much is too much, right? I have a couple of challenges presented to me as a manager to provide high quality services that are equal to or greater than the folks around us. And to do that at a good value. So what we like to do is benchmarking. We benchmark with everything that we do. We try to benchmark with our employee counts. We benchmark with our tax rates. We try to benchmark with our funding per department. So when we look at benchmarking against our, our surrounding metro communities, we can look at lots of things and we look at these as a staff to say, you know, where are we at on the affordability? Where are we at on our tax rate? Our tax rate, if we were to make the eight cents on top of that, would put us at forty three and a half cents. Concord's downtown is at seventy one and a half, Kannapolis sixty three. Not downtown Concord, everything except it is at forty eight cents. Charlotte thirty four point eight. And University City, which is obviously Charlotte, but it's a closest part of Charlotte to us. They actually have a, a separate tax rate that's higher than the rest of Charlotte and that's at thirty seven point six cents. But that doesn't really tell you the whole picture, right? Everybody chooses how to fund their community a little bit different. And here at the town of Harrisburg, we choose to try to have as much of an all in rate on the taxes as we can. That's a principle that the towns held to, that certainly feedback that I've heard from council during the budget process. Is that we don't want to nickel and dime our residents, that we want them to know everything is included in that tax rate and there aren't fees hidden on the backend to provide the services. So when you, when you factor in the ad Florum tax rate, which is property tax, you also have the option to put a motor vehicle tax on for a maximum of thirty dollars. Every other community maxes that out and that, that is, you'll see that across the board at thirty dollars. Ours is zero. Solid waste fee, like I spoke about earlier, it costs the town around a hundred and seventy dollars a year to provide that service to our residents per resident. And that is something that we put on the tax rate. That solid waste fee varies, you know, from community to community, but it's not zero in any of these communities. It ranges from forty a year to two hundred and seventeen a year. If you look at Kannapolis, two hundred and seventeen a year, just what Kannapolis charges for their solid waste fee is larger than or similar to the property tax increase that we're considering tonight. Just their solid waste fee, which is significant. Our stormwater fee, which is a self funded, self funded program, self sustaining program mandated by the federal government. Again, comes in near the bottom. It's not the cheapest Concord's a little bit cheaper, but every other community is higher. And our water and sewer rates are lower than anybody except for Concord who sells us the water. So that makes sense, but again, very affordable. And if we look at the total cost, you know, what it, all in, what does it cost to live in Harrisburg? What, what do you have to pay for municipal services in Harrisburg? That comes out to approximately one thousand nine hundred and thirteen dollars a year. And when we compare to our peers, we try to look and say, are we wildly above that? Are we wildly below it? And how, how, how close can you get to normalizing that rate? And match the expectations of your citizens for the quality of services that they expect. So when we look at our cost, it's actually the lowest, barely beating out Charlotte. But Charlotte has some significant reasons why they can charge such a, such a low rate. And I think one thing we've heard many and many times in here in our rezonings is we don't want to be like Charlotte. So when you don't want to be like Charlotte, it's hard to compare tax rate to tax rate. However, if you look at the other things that they're charging, it's still cheaper to live in Harrisburg than anywhere in Charlotte for the same value of home. The highest comes in Kannapolis at two thousand seven hundred and seventy six dollars. If you look at that monthly, basically a hundred and fifty nine dollars a month for your water bill, your taxes, all the fees, everything that you're ever going to have to pay for municipal services. And Harrisburg is going to cost you about a hundred and fifty nine dollars versus two hundred and sixteen in Concord or two hundred and thirty one in Kannapolis. Hundred and sixty four, still slightly more in, in Charlotte. But even more if you get out to university where you have a more similar community to the town of Harrisburg. Another thing I have here that, that you know, is a consideration, although we don't use it necessarily for benchmarking, but it's always something you want to look at in, in working in towns of all kinds of demographics, it's important to know, you know, is your town suffer with poverty? Does it suffer as a low income community? Those are, those are different issues that you have to deal with. Some of the folks on this list are, but if you look as a, as an affordability factor, a what is the cost to live in Harrisburg as a proportion of the median income? We come in at about one point seven percent of the median income is what it takes to live in Harrisburg and the highest is Kannapolis right around five percent. So more than double the affordability Harrisburg is compared to Kannapolis. We're, we're half of what downtown Concord or even Concord's rural. We come in at about sixty, seventy percent of that. So when we look at that, that's a good benchmark for us. We're proud of that. We'd like to continue, you know, on that trail. We certainly don't want to see it trek up. But this is something that, you know, the council certainly should consider, community should consider when we're talking about, you know, different ways to fund the government, how we do it compared to others. Another question we had was about reevaluation, tax rates, revaluations. What's a tax increase? What, what isn't? So we, we really have two mechanisms when we talk about property taxes to fund property taxes and how those adjust. So we have the tax rate, which we're talking about tonight, forty three and a half cent. Tax rate is being asked to be approved tonight. And those are frozen until the next evaluation. So that forty three and a half cent is applied on the current value of your home. And that stays the same next year and the next year. And if you do it at the beginning of a cycle, it stays that way for four years until you get to any, to a reevaluation. Reevaluation is different. Revaluation is intended to track inflation adjustments. For instance, four years ago, gasoline was not the price it was this morning when I filled up. Our light bill was not the same. The cost of asphalt is not the same. So the mechanism for governments to fund their, their costs over that time are one, set a tax rate. And then every four years, make a inflationary adjustment as home prices go up and that wealth is created in your community, that's when we'll reevaluate and apply that new rate to the new price. So what is that historically done and where's that money got? That's a good question. It's something that we talked about in our budget meetings, but those were thirty hours long and weren't well attended. So I wanted to at least hit the highlights back to the last two, which first implemented May of twenty seventeen. That reevaluation came in at four point four percent. So that's the total amount that was increased in, in May of twenty seventeen. And then there was another reevaluation in May of twenty one. Now these are, these are when we got the money, the evaluations are done about eighteen months ahead of time. So it was a twenty twenty revow and a twenty sixteen reeval. But for the, for those intensive purposes, because we're going to compare to where that money went, I want to put it in our budget cycle and just say, we're in, you know, we're in June now, just finished up May. It's a good stopping off point to, to look at. The reevaluation from twenty seventeen and from twenty twenty one total accounted for about a twenty percent increase to the tax bill, which isn't nothing, right? That's a lot of money. But again, going back to where is that money since been invested in the town in far as the services? Now I'll say I wasn't here, so I'm going, I'm a bit of a forensic person here, going back through records and, and seeing where we, what we did as a town over those years on those revaluations. But it becomes very clear when you look at the picture, the first column we have there is consumer price index. If you look at the, the raw numbers, I just put them there just so you could see the raw numbers and check those against CPI. If you want to go on the Bureau of Labor Statistics and check those, they're, they're the same. And what does CPI do? Those are the same costs that we have, right? The town still has to buy again asphalt. We still have to buy salt. We have to buy chlorine for the water. We have to buy all the same things that I have to buy the house. So you would expect the cost for town to operate to also be affected by consumer price index. So if you look at that same period of time, May of seventeen to May of twenty two, twenty twenty two, you know, a couple of weeks ago, the cost increase totaled nineteen point four three percent on the consumer price index and the reevaluation came in at twenty percent for that same amount of time. So the net difference in there, the delta is less than one percent difference in the amount of money that came in due to reevaluation versus the amount of money that had to go out for the same good services that the town provides. Now that is about as good as you can get as far as hitting it on the head and that would be a great, great reevaluation for both parties. If that accounted for the full eight year period. However, if you look back and you, okay, two evaluations should cover eight years, that's six years of data. So there won't be another reevaluation for two more years. And we certainly know this year is going to be a rough year on inflation. Conservatively, eight percent is, is what most economists would say we need to prepare for the next twelve months. And so I did a little little exercise, just projecting, you'll see the asterix on May of twenty three, adding that eight percent in. If you look at where it will be next year compared to the evaluation, leave the tax rate off the table, we'll be about nine percent behind. To provide the same services as we did versus the reevaluation, we have to move about nine percent of our existing tax rate and or find efficiencies to eat up for that or eat into the excess growth numbers, which we are fortunate enough to have here. And I'll talk about in a moment. Go forward, assume this is a one year issue. That's pretty optimistic. I think most folks expect inflation to be around for a little bit. But assume we just have one, one bad year of inflation and then we go back to three percent. The, the year after, we're looking at a total reevaluation versus consumer price index. Before we get into the next revow, it around negative twelve point eight percent. And what is that? What does that mean? Right? I mean, we, we know we have percentages compared to consumer price index, but what does that really mean compared to our tax rate? Well, if you look at the tax rate as is, just the thirty five and a half cent. We start out back in twenty twenty one as a net positive, we, we've made up about four cents on the tax rate that we have able to invest in the, in the services that we provide. By May of twenty twenty two, those two numbers have equaled. So, so it has no effect, no net effect on the tax rate. As we go into next year, it's about three cents in the tax rate that we're losing to inflation. And as we get into twenty twenty four, that's five cents on the tax rate that we lose to inflation. Now that's built into this budget. We're not coming back and saying, hey, you know, we, we need a, we need a tax increase before twenty twenty four. That's not the point of this conversation. The point is that that five cent had to be assumed through a couple of things. Primarily is that the cost to provide services to a new home in town isn't free either. When we talk about bringing in new homes, that comes with new taxes. That's great, but about eighty percent of those taxes are eaten up with the services that we have to provide. We have to provide police, we have to provide fire, water, sewer, public work services. And if the house comes in again valued at around that four fifty so that the county values it around three hundred, that's a break even point for us. Anything above that, then that's a surplus. Anything below it, we're in deficit. So houses have been coming in high, been coming in, you know, five, six, seven hundred thousand dollar houses, believe it or not, built in Harrisburg. And those have been net contributors. However, that excess, this is where it's going. It's going to the, to the low valuations that we've actually seen in the past, which, you know, I don't want anybody behind me here to hit me with a tomato or anything when I say low evaluations because, you know, twenty percent isn't nothing. But compared to the general cost increases that everybody is seeing, it does cancel. It's, they do cancel each other out. And, and so as we move forward, we've accounted for that. We've cut our spending, we've cut our staffing. We've really made this a bare bones budget and invested just in our core services and our people. We're proud of that. We're able to make up that thirteen percent difference in efficiency. And the only thing that we're, that we've really come to the town to, to discuss is whether or not we want to expand policing and add a new service. New services require a pay for, be it in a fee, be it in a tax. Anytime we're expanding to do something we don't currently do, those are things that require additional revenue. And I know that was a laborious decision for council all through the process. It was certainly a, a process for me to get us to the process, to get us to the recommendation that we have tonight. One last thing. There was a tax increase in twenty nineteen, which was brought up to me several times. Again, glad I was not the manager at the time, so I could, I could avoid some of the punches that are thrown at me on that one. That was six and a half cent and the majority of that tax increase was for Harrisburg Park expansion, which ended up being about a fifteen million dollar project. Transportation bonds and fire operating costs. You can refer back to those manager recommended budgets that give a narrative to that, but that tax increase was for specific things. It went to that and certainly we don't have that amount of money available to us today. Okay, off general funds, water and sewer overview. I'll be a little bit quicker with this and try to give plenty of time for Q and A here at the end. Our delivery, our, our service level delivery is expected to remain constant, which we again consider excellent. In twenty nineteen, the town council adopted a water and sewer rate resolution that environment that identified the rate increases that we would do every other year at five percent. In this budget, we're proposing to modify that resolution to five percent annually. The rate resolutions necessary to ensure we have the revenue. The revenues are generated to cover the annual contract increases from the water purchases from Concord and the sewer purchases from the Water and Sewer Authority of Barris County. As most know, we have a capacity shortage of sewer at the Rocky River Treatment Plant. The cost to outfit that is seventy million dollars and we'll have to prepare proportional share of that. So this goes towards paying that debt service in order to upgrade that plant. General or the Water and Sewer Fund Overview. Major impacts on this, city of Concord has increased the amount that they charge us for water at four percent this year. Sewer treatment has gone up five percent. We already talked about the debt service for the Rocky River Treatment Plan Expansion, Expansion, which is around three hundred and fifty five thousand a year, which will increase to four hundred and forty thousand a year moving forward for the approximately twenty five years. We also are seeing in that department, the inflationary pressures on supplies, equipment and services as well as wages. That's probably one of the departments we have the most competition with because that, that department competes with the private sector in the building trades. So we have lots of builders around here that put water lines and sewer lines into subdivisions and they certainly love to coach our employees. We also have CDL drivers at all levels, which are also in a shortage and in high demand. So we're certainly in a big competition for employees in those departments. Capital projects, we have some great projects here that we've been working on. Morehead West Sewer Phase One, which is a sewer extension out to the Morehead West Small Area Plan that was budgeted in at two hundred, or sorry, two hundred, I wish two hundred, two point one million. Our first bid came in at nearly four million. So we've put that project on hold. Since it is an economic development project that calls into question the rate of return on that. And we'll continue to monitor that and look at it as pricing on materials comes down. Water line upgrades of a million dollars in both fiscal twenty two and twenty three. Sequoia Hills Farm Mill Loop Construction, that's a water line to serve that neighborhood, three hundred thousand. And decommissioning of Milbrook Pump Station, and this is something that we've worked hard on from an infrastructure standpoint to invest in things that reduce cost. So each pump station that we're able to take offline reduces staffing cost, it reduces maintenance cost and permitting cost. So that's something that again, we're very proud of. And Amington Pump Station decommissioned, same type of project. And vehicles and equipment coming in around two hundred thousand dollars for a total capital budget of six point one million dollars for water and sewer. And vehicles and equipment coming in around two hundred thousand dollars for a total capital budget of six point one million dollars for water and sewer. Here are the revenues for that department, ninety seven percent, obviously. Weird looking pie. Almost everything is just from charges for services. Your water bill goes to pay for the services at the water department. And the financial model, again, looks very much like the general fund. We do have some red in the in the front end of this budget, which is not typical. However, we've been saving money to pay for capital projects in those years. So we do expect those to go down because we've built up large reserves in order to pay for them. And you'll see in the out years that it continues to grow. So we have plenty of mechanisms available to us with contingency and savings in order to make sure that we're able to do those projects in those years. Stormwater Fund, very similar. Enterprise Fund, no in, no rate increase proposed for the stormwater fee. Funds will just continue to be used to address problematic areas throughout town. Regional Detention Pond, which is regional originally planned for fiscal twenty, is included in the budget, but it'll be dependent on new development in town center as well as spot improvements throughout the town. These funds were allocated in twenty twenty two to hire a consultant to create a new stormwater rate model. However, that isn't done at this point. So once that is done, and we have some recommendations of whether or not a tiered system is something we want to move to, then we'll bring back to council at that time. In a much more simplistic model, since the the numbers are much smaller, but looking very good in the stormwater fund. Year-over-year comparisons of our operating funds. But I'd like to draw attention to here is just the total increase and decrease across the board. If you look at the far right, this is a four percent decrease over the previous year overall. And all funds reconcile balances here. If we look again, last year's total budget, eighty point three million versus this year's total budget, seventy seven point two million for a reduction of three point one million on the annual budget. Also some changes throughout the fee schedule, which conjured up much spirited debate from some of the colleagues on the dais. And we did change the EV charging rate from fifty to sixty cents an hour at Town Hall and seventy cents at Harrisburg Park so that we weren't losing money on those. Those those are not subsidized any longer, which is good news because I believe there's a bill floating through North Carolina House right now that makes that illegal. And we will not be able to subsidize electric vehicle charging from the government level if that passes. But we're good. We've already counted for that. Increase to planning and zoning fees, subdivision case fees, five percent increase on all water and sewer rates and system development charges that we charge to the developers. As they come in, they'll have to fund those system development charges at a greater amount. And increases to construction plan review fees and fire plan review fees. Parks and Recreation, significant change here in defining what is a resident rate. Previous to this year, we have always defined a resident as a resident of Carris County with everybody getting the same rate. In consideration of the fact that we're having to change our budget significantly in order to pay for enhanced police division, we went ahead and changed out of county to out of town. So this is a discount given to taxpayers within town of Harrisburg. And everyone else would have to pay the standard rate. So what are our next steps besides I need to drink a water? So the budget's been presented in May and June. It's been made available to the public on the town's website as well as all of the hearings that we had to discuss it. It's been here, physical inspection at Town Hall since that time. We're holding the public hearing tonight. Town Council will need to vote on the, on the budget at the completion of this meeting in order for staff to be able to implement and have the budget prepared for the July first rollout. Any questions from council before I take a seat and we move on to the next stage? Fantastic.
Thank you, Rob. I'm going to break before we move into public. I'm going to break before you even have public comments. At this time, we'll open the public hearing. We will go to those here in person first, and then we'll take comments from those joining us via Zoom. Just a reminder, please be sure to state your name and your address for the record. A little bit different this evening. You will each have three minutes to address council. If there were questions that you have that were not just addressed by our town manager's presentation, we ask that you state those first that we can keep a running record. Our goal tonight is to try to address as many of those as we can. We are not afforded the time of back and forth dialogue with each person that comes up, but we are keeping a list and we'll try to to answer that on hand. All that we can, including email later if necessary. So I will go to the signup sheet in person. I think first on our list is going to be Nicole Esqu.
Hello, my name is Nicole Esqu, eight zero one zero, Wycombe Court, and I'd like to defer my time to James Esqu. Thank you.
Thank you, Nicole. James?
Cue, my name is James Esqu, eighty ten Wycombe Court, Harrisburg Accountability dot org. I'm here tonight to comment on the historic tax increase included in the budget that you're voting on. When I listened to the proposal, the two takeaways I got as justification for the rate increase was inflation and crime. I'll address these separately. First is inflation. Inflation should never be a reason for property and tax, for property tax increase. This is because as asset prices rise, when inflation increases, so too does the property you're levying those taxes against. And in turn, the tax base itself is inflated. In this case, we're all paying more for automobiles and houses. So we're also being taxed more even without a rate increase. This includes the tax on vehicles that every Harrisburg resident pays annually when they renew their tax. And just going off script here, it's a little disingenuous to throw up a slide that says there's, you know, we're paying zero in vehicle taxes when we draw one point two million dollars in our budget from that, thinking about fees. But that's okay. I'll probably make a few mistakes too. But back to inflation. So that's what the reevaluations for. So it's, you know, I I heard a lot of talk about how inflation was going to hit the town's budget on the expense side and not so much about the revenue side. The town is going to collect record revenue this year from taxes without any tax rate increase at all, and that's the truth. Let's move on to crime. So how did we get to where we are today? You can find a few charts in your packet I sent in advance. The first one A is population growth. The more housing approved, the more folks can come in. And there's nothing wrong with growth by itself, but with growth comes growing pains. One B, here you see crime. This, this is data that was provided to me by the Sheriff's Office. One C, traffic on Robinson Church Road. These are average daily numbers from NCDOT, but you pick any of them, town query, Rocky River, Stallings Road, forty nine, similar pattern. Finally, one D, you see the tax rate. You can quickly identify a pattern with all these up and to the right. So why am I sharing this data? Because there's a myth out there, one you might have heard. It goes like this. With just a little more growth, things will pay for themselves. It will increase the tax base and will all pay a little less. I'm here to tell you, and these charts tell you, it's just not true. Let's put it to bed right now. More growth, more crime, more taxes. Are you getting it? More growth, more traffic, more crime, more taxes. Moving on. I want to draw your attention to two more graphs. Two A is head count for the town staff over time. All of them are full-time employees with benefits also up and to the right. Two B is a little more interesting. This is the ratio of town employees to town residents. You can see in twenty seventeen, there were one hundred sixty six residents per town employee. And now in twenty twenty two, there is one employee for every hundred forty three residents. Revenue per citizen follows a similar trajectory. You would think, I would think, that this ratio would either stay flat or actually improve with economies of scale. What this tells us is that government is growing faster, at a faster rate than the town itself. It suggests we might be getting out over our skis. You're probably surprised by now, I'm against any tax increase, especially one that is of historic proportions like the one on the table before you tonight. My suggestion is you first bump up the amount developers contribute before increasing the tax burden on existing residents. We're long overdue for this, and I don't see anything in the new budget that changes this. I did see on a slide that there was a application fee for developers, and it's unclear if that's quite at the statutory limit or not. That's a question I have for council tonight. It's my understanding we aren't there today. Is it going to cover the, cover the gap? No, it isn't. It'd be dishonest for me to say otherwise, but it's a place to start. It's something you can do now to demonstrate to taxpayers that raising the burden on them is truly a last resort. But don't come to me as a resident and say you've done everything possible until those developer impact fees are at their statutory limit. As I'm wrapping up, another myth I wanted to spell, and I've heard this from three council members, which is why I'm bringing it up, is since you didn't see a citizen at the eight or nine budget meetings you had, that means people don't care about a tax increase. Let me tell you how off-putting that sounds to a resident. You might as well say, I'm, I'm going to get away with whatever I can as long as nobody's watching. First, we live in a representative democracy. I can't be in the room at the federal level either for every issue I care about. I can't be there, the State House in Raleigh. In fact, there's a school board meeting going on as we speak. I'm here instead of the, I mean, I don't care what's going on, my daughter's school. We elected you because you share our values. We elected you to represent us. So please don't assume because we weren't in the room that we don't care. I'll tell you where I was two years ago. I was right here at this lectern. The last time the town came hat in hand for more taxpayer dollars, nothing happened. I was told there was no choice. Again, last year, I spoke about the budget. Nothing happened. That's why people don't come to meetings because they don't feel like they're being heard. The question I want to leave you with is will we be heard tonight? Thank you.
Robert, there's some questions you would like to.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm glad to have, I'm happy to answer the ones that I can, but certainly if council or the mayor want to speak first, or if he'd like to refer to me, and I'll just try to answer Mr. Esqu's questions first and then while you guys time. And, you know, I appreciate it, Jim. I hope you don't mind me calling you Jim, since you and Nicole are both in Citizens Academy where where we first met. So, you know, I certainly appreciate the feedback. You know, a couple of things I just wanted to address or, I guess, for your clarity, maybe I fell asleep up there and didn't give the best presentation, but you know, and for the folks in in the room, as far as inflation comparison, I I tried to make that comparison that the cost inflation was greater than the house inflation. So, I mean, you know, certainly look back to that, or I'd be glad to, you know, give you that that difference. But as of right now, it's flat. We would anticipate being negative thirteen percent behind on that inflation. So as far as, you know, inflation of costs versus the inflation of houses, which generate our revenue. I certainly understand that point and glad to follow up with you on that. The vehicle tax was the other one, and and certainly, you know, that, that's an area I want to highlight. You know, the intent wasn't to be disingenuous, but all of the communities on that chart, now, you know, I'd be glad to bring that that up or get with you after, after the fact. Everybody pays the same property tax on the value of the vehicle. So I didn't highlight that. We just assume everybody does that. So when you look at their ad valorem tax, let's say Kannapolis, for example, they pay sixty three cent on their house and on their, on their other property, vehicles, trailers, things like that. And we do the same. So that's an apples to apples comparison. On the first line of that chart, the the highlight I was trying to make is that in addition to that, we both pay property tax, but in addition to that, for every vehicle, those other communities leverage a thirty dollar vehicle tax. So if you have three vehicles there, you're paying a hundred dollars more in addition to the property tax than you would in Harrisburg. So, you know, I hope I highlighted that well, but again, I'd be glad to provide you with, with that after the fact. Developer cost. We'll look into that. My, my understanding is that is at the statutory maximum. That's a, that's a formula the state gives us that we have to abide by. You know, we follow up with our, our finance director who calculates that. Since we are raising rates, I know we're allowed to raise that five percent, which is what we, as rates go up, we can raise that amount, but we, that's a specific formula that we've, when I say we, the, all the communities in North Carolina have been sued on and had to pay developers large amounts of money. I would certainly like to charge them more. I would ask everybody in this room to contact your state legislature and point out the fact that your taxes have to go up because building developers have a better lobby than we do. And and the final one was the the two V ratio. Number of residents served by by employee, and it's not exactly what we have, but it's close enough. You know, I think one of the things I would point out, because we've, we've put this in past budgets. But if you look at that trend is true, right? We've certainly, that number has gone down as we've added new services to the town. Some of those things are like stormwater services, water and sewer services. All of those employees are kind of bunched into one category rather than just under general fund. But one thing we we do, like, again, I mentioned earlier, was just benchmark, right? Where are we compared to everybody else with how many residents one employee serves? What is that ratio? So, you know, the town of Harrisburg, Corey Arkok's is at about a hundred and fifty three residents. I think you had about a hundred and forty four. Take your number for, for example, let's say it's a hundred and forty four. The, that is the highest resident to employee ratio in the county. The second highest is Mount Pleasant. They do a hundred and thirty residents per one employee. Lowest is Locust. There are sixty three residents per employee. Concord's eighty eight. Kannapolis is one oh six and Charlotte's a hundred and fourteen. So as far as just an efficiency standpoint, it's a good point. That's something we do strive to is to make sure we're always maximizing that efficiency. But the way we gauge that is what does it take to provide those same services in light communities? And and we're doing remark, you know, somewhere between fifty percent to a hundred percent better than our peers there. But certainly, you know, I've offered council and I'd offer anybody in the community to, you know, do ride rounds with our police. Come hang out with the, with the fire, our public work folks and and see what they do. I know you and your wife were, you know, have done that. You guys have come to the Citizens Academy and understand what the town does. But that's certainly something that I think all our citizens should do is really understand what our employees do, what services are they providing? And and see what the efficiencies there are. So I wanted to point those out and then I'll, I'll turn it back over to council and the mayor, but I will say if your final question, at least from a staff standpoint, that's always something that's very important to us to make sure that that we do hear you, right? And we're always available. You know, make an appointment with me in person, phone call, email. Certainly all our staff is is accessible. We want to make sure all our residents are heard. So with that, back to you, Mayor.
Thank you, Rob. Counselor, are there any other comments you would like to make to Mr. Esqu before we move on to our next?
When I would only add, no, Mr. Esqu tracks us all very carefully. And I, I appreciate that. I mean, it's good for accountability. I did take small issue with with your crime graph. You know, violent crime looks relatively flat on the, on the scale, right? It's a large scale. But if you break it out as I did, based on the numbers from the sheriff. But if you break it out, as I did, based on the numbers from the sheriff, you actually see that on the four categories of crime, the only one that isn't shooting up at a 45-degree angle is property. So I think the scale is a little off there, and I'd love to sit down and compare notes. I also appreciate that you said that we are elected to represent you, and you take issue with us saying that people aren't in meetings. You are right, we are elected, I think, to represent, and we did sit through the nine 30-plus hours, and I think that gives us a little bit better idea of what these numbers Rob is talking about, so.
Thank you.
I'd like to address one thing, and only because I have a little bit of expertise in this area. When you talk about crime, and when you talk about the myth of growth, traffic, and crime, there are no components that you're missing. Number one, Harrisburg is considered a soft target, I'm just gonna be honest, because it's a rather wealthy town. And one of the platforms, probably the biggest platform that I ran on when I ran for the seat, was crime. And one of the things I said at the meet and greets and at the table at the coffee shop is, it is coming, and it is coming. There are a couple of components that you missed, and number one is the disregard of the new attitude toward law enforcement. Bad guys are not afraid of the police. It's really that simple. Right now, there had occurred, because bad guys would rather go to jail in Mecklenburg County than they would in Comberas County. That mentality, growth, growth, traffic, and crime is kind of... It's kind of what everybody follows. Bad guys don't follow that trend. Bad guys look for soft targets. We don't want to be reactive, because you will never, ever, ever catch up with crime once it comes. If you're not ahead of it, if you're behind it, when it gets here, you'll always be chasing it, always. We want to be proactive. We have excellent law enforcement services, even, and I come from a law enforcement background, and I am extremely, extremely proud of the guys who serve this community. They are extremely proactive. They have done more with what they have than I could even imagine. I mean, they're just good. We want to be proactive. We don't want what's coming to Harrisburg to infiltrate into Harrisburg, because I'm telling you from personal experience, you'll never catch up with it, ever. Once it gets in here, it's here. It'll hide, you won't be able to find it, they'll be looking for it, and it will just, I mean, it will just, it will destroy our community. It's really that simple.
Thank you, Maurice. Any other council comments?
Mr. Eskie, I'll say something at the end, but I'd like to hear everyone's comments first, because I'm sure they're going to be touching some items that you touched. So once everybody's had a chance, then I'd like to address.
Thank you. The only other name I see on the sign up in person was Charles Brock that came up, and I believe he left, is Mr. Brock, around... Before we move to online, was there anyone else in person that wanted to address council? Please come up, state your name and address, please.
I counsel Jeff Phillips, 6005, the Metal's Lane. Wow. Before I get started, this would be up to Rob and Lee and everything. You've mentioned a couple road closings a lot, installing dro, don't forget, there's another one just a mile down the road. It's going to be closing for four to six weeks. That's the roundabout at the new middle school. I'll let you make that call, whether to let the residents know about that. But that's going to be happening 1st of July, somewhere around there. Okay, tax rate, 8%. Holy smokes. I remember being on council of 1.5% tax increase, and oh my gosh, I thought I committed a crime. I mean, holy cow, I don't know how you're going to be able to think of that at all. And one question I have is, have you talked with the county to help out with this? And the reason why I say this is, when that new fire station, I can't remember if it's two or three where the EMS facility is, the county helped pay for that. Is the county going to help pay for all the police officers here in the next four to five years? Have you asked? It's something to think about. I hope you did, and everything, because it's a, because they'll be helping out a lot of people that do not live within the city limits. They really will be, and I'm glad they are, but county can help us out a little bit. And just talk with county commissioners here in the future, especially for your new folks, because an 8% tax increase, that's a legacy I do not want to have when I got off a council. I'm so glad I never had that choice at all. I mean, goodness sakes. And one of the questions is, I heard that the other gentleman say about people come to council meetings and budget meetings. I know what those are. They are long and brutal, and no residents ever came to, never, never, ever. And, but they have the expectations that we know what we're doing. They don't want new people just coming in and saying, asking questions. They expect, have high expectations residents. I know for a fact. But that's all I gotta say, 8%. I can understand a couple percent and everything, but 8%? Holy smokes. Especially, this is going to start July 1st. Are we going to get all these police officers July 1st? Think of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
It's 8 cents on the tax rate. Jeff, no, you're good. You know, you point out, we've got a new mayor, we've got two new council members. I've been doing budgets. This is like year seven, I think it is, for me. These guys got baptized by the fire. They stepped into something that was already here, that had been rolling. It was a freight train coming. Whether we wanted to see it or not, it was there. It got dismissed years ago. You know, Councilman Barfield and I sponsored back in 2017, I think it was, the police study, because everyone said at the time, "We need a police station, we need a police force." Everybody was all about, "We needed the police." Now we have the police. We're telling you why we need the police, and everybody doesn't want the police. So I'm confused when we get to that point of what it is that we're needing. Do we need the police? Do we not need the police? Is the traffic that bad on 49 that we need to have folks out there looking at it with this option that gives us two traffic control officers? You know, I cannot commend Maurice, Alteen, and Jennifer enough in these meetings for jumping in both feet and taking control of where they were. It was scary my first year. This year, it was beyond scary. And Jeff, you know that budget is, will eat you alive if you're not careful. They all jumped in, they all had questions that would get on the phone. If they weren't certain, they would call Rob, they would call Rodney, they would call Ian, myself. Whomever was available, they would ring our bell and say, "Hey, can you help me get through this?" Or before a budget meeting, we would go through some of the spreadsheets so they could understand what they're actually looking at. So for these guys to say that they're new, absolutely they're new. Were they scared coming into this? No, they jumped in with both feet. Thank you.
That would be great, Lieutenant Meesmer.
I can help out with a few questions. Give me just a second, stretch out. I might start throwing fruit. As it pertains to the county paying for more deputies, I wish that was true. County currently pays for two deputies now, but they also have to do that for Midland, they also have to do that for Mount Pleasant. There's also an argument of why don't we provide more for Concord, why don't we provide more for Kannapolis? Obviously, it just continues to grow and grow until the county finally said, "Two is all we're going to do for each one of the towns that the sheriff's office sponsors through the contracts, and after that, they're cutting it off." There was zero tolerance for talking about that anymore. Now, the next thing you made a comment to was July 1st, and whether or not how fast will people hire. This will be a step process. Starting July 1st, we will order cars. It will take me eight to nine months to even get a car in from Ford. By then, we've got to have somebody hired, somebody trained, somebody can take over traffic units, which already have that, but I've got to have a replacement. If we hire a person directly off the street, a graduate from UNCC, for example, it's going to take me almost a year to get them through BLT, which is part of my law. Then I've got to get them through a four-month training period, to where hopefully they perform well enough to be cut loose, and if they don't, I've got to start all over again. That's the difficult part about law enforcement. It's not plug and play. Now, a lot of times, we do get lateral transfers, and those are great. It still takes me 60 to 90 days on average. Then they've got to work their two weeks, and they've got to come train for at least a month, month and a half. By then, we're up to somewhere around four to five months, maybe six months. So all this will be a step process. The very first ones will be when admin cap along the two traffic units. I don't think many people argue we have a traffic problem that you guys like to have us look into. After that, the next will be more detectives and a crime prevention unit. Then we, almost, I guess this will be closer to three to four years down the road, we'll add four more to the nighttime and daytime patrol squads. And there's where your numbers are coming from for the most part. So this will not be a quick, instant hiring of 11 deputies. It will be staggered throughout the next few years. And didn't you have one more that you said? It was county, so I first... Yeah, that was one. I thought you had a third one. I couldn't recall what the third one was. He might think so, to let me know.
My memory's over.
Thank you, Lieutenant Meesmer. Rob, counsel, does anybody have any other comments?
If I can add one thing, please keep in mind that we are public servants of the town of Harrisburg. We are also residents of the town of Harrisburg. So I'll be writing my check right with you. We're not modern, we're not trying to stuff our coffers, but we're trying to protect this town. It's really that simple.
Thank you, Maurice.
Lieutenant Meesmer covered it. I was just getting nervous. I need like an off button with Lieutenant Meesmer, make sure.
There, I have a couple of comments.
Rick, hang on. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Okay, just a couple of things. Rob, I think that that 6.5 cents that you were talking about, our last ban, is your proposed. I didn't vote for that either. That was for a 10-year plan. So I don't know if you were here for that. Lee and Brian Lee would probably know. And another thing, you said all the, a couple of other cities that are paying more than us. Everybody has a lot more to offer than us. They have baseball stadiums, steak houses. You know, Harrisburg, we're sitting here, we pay more tax, and we don't have near the amenities, Kannapolis, Concord. But my big thing is the inflation, you know, possibly heading into recession. 900-point drop in the stock market. We're going to revow 2020, another revow coming in '24. Crime, it hasn't increased. I'm not saying, I'm a retired fireman, and I'm not, my brother's retired Pennsylvania state police. I'm not saying we don't need it. I just don't think we need it now. I hear Maurice with, it's coming, it's coming. You might not get rid of it if it comes. I don't believe that, but like I said, I wasn't a police officer, I was a firefighter. But we have six subdivisions with 2,500 houses on the books. I think if we waited a year and revisited, I'm not opposed to a tax increase, two or three cents, so the town could run. I'm all in. I think our policemen are doing an awesome job like everybody else does. I just think the residents are getting hit hard with grocery prices. Gas pumps in California, they're redoing them, so they go to triple digits. Diesel fuel is over $8 a gallon in LA. I've been getting phone calls, definitely more than I ever got over this. I guess my phone number on the website is my cell, which is fine. A lot of people told me they can't get ahold of anybody else. I don't know nothing about that. But I just think that at this point in time, that Charlotte, Mecklenburg County, Concord, Kannapolis, Comberas County decided not to raise property increases because of the financial stability of their residents, I don't know why we should. I would have, I don't have any problem with, you know, looking into it next year, but it's a terrible time to raise taxes. It's hard for me to understand some registered Republicans that would be for a tax increase. I'm a resident, I've been a registered Democrat for 40 years. I'm 66 years old, and I'm the never want to spend any money. That's just how I am. So I support a two or three cent increase. I've said that from the beginning. I have the money to pay the taxes, it ain't about me. But as a lot of you always say, it's the residents, the residents, the residents. And right now, I think if we raised this eight cents, we're not really listening to the residents. And I think that's very dramatic, and I think it's shameful for us to do that at this point. And everybody knows how this world is upside down right now, with the war, stock market, gas, groceries. I got to buy groceries now, eat everything we eat, because you can't afford to throw anything away. And I know everybody's like that. It's not only me. It's a weird thing to happen to somebody after you retire. Because I've just gotten a lot of phone calls, and I was really upset the whole time I was getting these phone calls. So all I got to say, I am definitely voting no, and we will go from there.
Thank you, Rick. Any other comments before we call? I think there's one more person in the audience that would like to speak.
My name is Mike Fevenin, 6809 Marketway. I've been a resident of Harrisburg for a little over 29 years. I've seen this town grow tremendously. While I lived probably a little less than the 29 years, right outside town limits in Middleton subdivision. Four years ago, we sat here and we started talking about growth. We started talking about all these housing projects. All these things came before the council. I look around and I see not too many people here in the audience. Four years ago, I started attending council meetings. I started attending Planning and Zoning Commission meetings. I started attending the meetings and to see some of the vitriol that's posted on Facebook now from elected officials and from town people that are going back and forth with some of this growth. It frustrates me. We're standing here in a time where all of us, every single one of us, are paying more for fuel, groceries. I sent a text message out to Sheriff Shaw the afternoon and told him how much that I appreciated everything that the town, that county sheriff's department does for us. You don't think about it until you need them. And our division is here. I'm a pastor, been a pastor at a church in Harrisburg for nine years. I see these guys patrolling. I see them coming in to the parking lot. Today, a unit drove through our parking lot today, just checking. That makes you feel so much better. I never, I needed the sheriff's department one time in 28 years I lived in Middleton. But there are people in this town that need the sheriff's department. There are things like Mr. Price was saying, there is going to come a time when crime is coming, and we've got to be ready for that. And I'm a Republican, straight up, always have been. And I'm looking at this six-cent increase for the sheriff's department to bring more patrol officers here? Absolutely. I lived in Middleton for 28 and a half years. I didn't move when all that, we started talking about all this development and all these things, and I sat in these developers' meetings, the neighborhood meetings, and I saw all the presentations where we were told that our infrastructure can handle the growth that's coming. Our schools are at 134% capacity, and we're told every developers' meeting, "Well, it's not up to us, it's up to the schools. We don't control that." Folks, it's time for us to start controlling some of this. And you guys are tasked with that. You are our elected representatives. And if you guys feel like we need a six-cent tax increase to bring in more sheriff's deputies in here, absolutely. Is it going to hurt? Absolutely. It's painful. Right now, it's more money out of pocket, but I chose not to move to Midland. I chose not to move to Locust. When I left Middleton subdivision, I moved into the town of Harrisburg. And I am a voting member in this community now. I served on the Parks and Rec Advisory Board. I want to be involved in this community. I have been. My kids went to school here. I spent my money here on groceries. I spent my money in the restaurants here for 29 years. Let's give these people a break. They're not looking at this to try, as Maurice was saying, they're not looking to try and pad their coffers. This is stuff that I believe we're going to need. Let's take care of it before it overruns us. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fevenin. Is there anyone else in person that would like to speak? Dana, I believe you have an email that a resident... Um, Jan, I believe you have an email that a resident requested that you read.
Yes, I do. So this, I'll just read this. It was sent by a lady who will be here tonight. Name is Melanie Freeman. It's good evening, county members and council members. Our small community has undergone many changes and most were initiated prior to this present council. It is unfortunate that these past decisions are now requiring desperate measures. I'm referencing our fourteen million dollar apartment, almost ten new buildings. Most of the repercussions and damage control have fallen on your shoulders. Some have excused the need for more taxes as the price of doing business, but we cannot continue to do things the same way they've always been done. I believe the council has some new creative minds and could, with more time, come up with better solutions. Whereas you have a deadline of July first to create a balanced budget. Not every solution needs to be found by that day. And speaking of enhancing the police force, the past two years of extreme stress and financial struggles have created an environment where an increase in taxes will exacerbate an already untenable situation. Government has had access to our pockets, our inheritance and our property to the extent that they believe they have an unlimited access to it. Property owners are considered goldmine of resources for government. What you've worked hard for, you are now penalized for in the form of taxes for bringing to your hard work. So what is a possible solution? A one half to two cent sales tax. Everyone then pays their fair share. It would not be enough to deter people from shopping in Harrisburg and get this ongoing income from the town. Revenues would automatically increase with inflation and the hit to the community would not be the hit of another tax increase against one's prior property. Cannot presume on the future. No one knows what prices will be in two years. If you raise taxes a cent to cover the next few years with hope of not having to do it again, once we stop the next council or raising them again in two years. Tax surpluses are almost unavoidable. Towns are not known for having savings accounts. Politicians are not known for beating their promises. The bottom line is trust has been damaged and almost destroyed across the political and governmental spectrum. This council has the opportunity to, to restore that trust and renew confidence in our elected officials. I hope you will take minimal tax steps until you can come up with a better solution. May I make one more suggestion? Every year, the president gives a state of the union address. With the change in leadership over the past year, it would be good to have a state of the town address for people to understand the conditions we find ourselves in and the issues that need to be faced. And that most people do not participate in the budget process and are shocked at the proposal. Many don't understand how so much impact the town has had. Transparency is the word of the day and maybe this would help in creating more transparency.
Thank you, Jan. Any comments?
Hi, dude. That's Donna. Rob and, and all town employees, I'm grateful for you guys for stepping up to putting your time, your work, your efforts to reviewing the budget and presenting the information that we all can understand. So thank you. I, I'm truly grateful. We've known since twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, when the police study came out, that a tax increase would be necessary for all of us um, just to build a facility, hire new staff. So this is not new information. And we've all known it. It has been public knowledge for quite some time. What we did not know in this past year, two years, is what our current situation would be, our current economic situation. While there are many people in the town of Harrisburg who can absorb the tax increase, there are many that cannot. They are taking time and efforts to really pay for food, pay to go to work. These are things that we could not anticipate. Um, you've heard several different people saying, people in the room and from the letter, that that incremental increase would be something that we could look forward to. And that's something that I, I would love for us to do. When we first started the budget talk, I was one of a few people who said that the increase should be less than what it was. There were other people in the room that thought we just needed to rip the bandaid and go ahead with the, with the higher rate. I still think we can do all the things that we need to do, accomplish all the things that the town and citizens deserve and want. But we need to look at a way to do that without that eight percent increase. It's not six, it's eight. So if we could do that for all of us, because it's impacting all of us, not just some, all. So if we could do that, I'm all for.
We discussed, we can't do that. We can only, we can only do, we know, two, 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 we can discuss very few. We realize that we could only guarantee to, if I remember the record, we couldn't guarantee the two after, the two after. The sheriff put us in a, a position that we need to sign a ten year agreement if we were going down this path. So I don't want us to confuse the residents with the idea that we floated a two, two, two. Yeah, we did. We floated it, but we understood what came with that. We couldn't guarantee the next two and the two after that, and the two after that, or whatever else was needed. And we also understood the sheriff needed a ten year agreement. I was one of the ones that said rip off the bandaid, yes, because if you go down that path, I don't want to hit you this year, next year, next year. It becomes a point where we just add two percent every year. And I don't think any resident wants to see every, a two cents every year. I wanted us to be one and done, get it out. If we could have gone down two, 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 then I'd be right there with you.
Is there anyone else in person or move to our online folks? I believe, um, at the beginning of the meeting, there was a gentleman, Bruce, that had some comments. Bruce, if you're still there. I see you on the screen, Bruce. It just looks like your microphone is muted. So if you still would like to speak, just unmute that for us.
Oh, okay. Now, can you hear me?
Yes, sir. If you had to state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Bruce Gibbs, eight zero zero two Wycombe Court. I'm concerned about my thirty-two percent tax increase two years ago. I contacted every council member and got responses from five members. So far, I cannot get a straight answer where my tax increase went. Two members say it went for park expansion. One member says no, and two members did not answer my question. So if council was so concerned about more police, then why did not council hire more police with the tax increase two years ago instead of putting it into the park expansion? Park expansion was rejected by voters, but town council went against voters. I thought we live in a democracy, but not in Harrisburg. In other states, property tax can only be increased by the voters. Looks like Harrisburg Town Council lacks ethics. Okay, is, why not put the tax increase for more police on a ballot for voters to decide? Is council going to raise taxes to build a YMCA and other frivolous projects? I, I'm for more police, but council needs to be held accountable what they've done in the past. So that's all I got to say.
Thank you, Mr. Gibbs.
Yeah, and I'll, um, as long as, I hope Mr. Gibbs is still on the line and, and certainly happy to follow up with you. Um, your situation, you actually emailed in to all council and I was copied on that. Or at least it was sent over to me from, from the council. So, um, I actually understand your, your unique situation since I was able to look into it. Um, and Mr. Gibbs did, did get a thirty-two percent increase in his revaluation. In the previous, the twenty nineteen that we, that we, or the twenty twenty that we received in twenty twenty-one. Um, that property, uh, was built, I think in twenty fifteen and Bruce, you're, feel free to correct me if, if I'm wrong there. And the initial valuation was about two hundred and sixty-two thousand. Uh, it then actually went down in the twenty seventeen valuation. Four percent, so it went down, uh, to two hundred and fifty thousand. And then this valuation came along and it, it did. It went up thirty-two percent. Now, the townwide valuation was only fifteen percent. So we didn't get as a town thirty-two percent of everybody. But this was a unique situation where this house, um, for whatever reason, maybe it's the time that it was built right at the end of the, uh, housing collapse and, and the rebound of the economy. It was increased up to three hundred and forty thousand from a county valuation. So that is a significant increase. I, I would point out though, that the, uh, fair market value estimator on, on that house is five hundred thousand. So the county's valuing it three forty. It's worth five hundred. It was valued at two fifty to two sixty, um, for many years. So I certainly empathize with that. Uh, but that's not typical of what the town has actually seen across, uh, most houses again, within that ten, fifteen percent range, but those that, that were significantly undervalued did see that increase. Um, my presentation kind of laid out, but I, I reiterate that, you know, that valuation of fifteen percent went to the twenty percent increase in cost of services and goods that we provide. And, um, yeah, another question there about why didn't we hire more deputies? And again, I, you know, we, we, I'll use that as the, the royal we because it wasn't, certainly wasn't my decision. Um, and I don't necessarily want to take a hundred percent credit for, uh, good or bad for past decisions. But since that time, since twenty seventeen, the town has hired, um, eight firemen and six deputies without that tax increase to, to pay for it. So bringing on fourteen additional public safety employees, uh, ate up part of that. But really just the increased cost, if we wouldn't have, not have hired any employees, if the town would have not hired in that same amount of time, the cost to employ them, the cost to put gas in the vehicles, the cost to purchase the vehicles, the cost to purchase the guns, the vests, the ammo, uh, just all the costs associated with that went up twenty percent. And so did our collections. So, so really the way we, from what I can tell, you know, reviewing past budgets, the way we accounted for being able to add all of those firemen and being able to add all of those deputies was through efficiencies in other departments. Uh, our, our general government is about fifty percent of what the other, um, general government, excuse me, what the other general government, uh, departments are on, on our benchmarking. Um, as well as our infrastructure has been extremely efficient over the years. Again, it's a self-serving statement. I'll, I'll, uh, I'll point that out right away, but if you look at what we spend on infrastructure, it's far below what any of our other neighbors do. So that's where we take the money from to be able to afford uh, a public service. But at some point, there is an end to that, right? You do need to invest in your, in your infrastructure and you do need to invest in, in the other things that town does. So, um, we can always continue and this was part of our budget process uh, from the beginning. And I, I recommend everybody go watch those, uh, um, thirty hours of absolutely riveting edge of your seat, uh, budget presentations that I did. But, um, you know, I think if you do, you'll see the theme of, you know, I made it very clear to this council that um, we will be able to maintain the services that we do and we continue to do those at a high level with the current tax rates that we have and, and will make do. But if we're going to ask the town to expand a service that we don't provide currently, go and start doing detective work, start doing, uh, traffic specific work. Um, start having, you know, a, a, a crime reduction division or if there was any other service, you know, we were going to start washing windows for, for the residents. If it's something we don't do now, you need to have a funding source to add that service because up until now, we've kind of taken from Peter to pay Paul. And, and all services moving forward, if they're new, are going to require a funding server. If they're just an expansion of something you already do, then we'll use our growth to, to account for that. But if it's something we don't already do, uh, we need to find a pay for it, be it in a fee or in a tax.
Thank you, Rob. Any other council members?
So Rob, could you expand on that, please? Um, again, oh, we do basically sixty or seventy percent property taxes versus what Mecklenburg County does.
Um, no, it's, it's actually sixty or seventy percent. Are you, are you talking about the property tax rates versus Mecklenburg or what the county valuation is?
We, um, do our, get our general fund from and how we operate, where we get that revenue from.
Yeah, so, um, good question. Uh, so our property tax accounts for about sixty percent of our general fund. Right? It provides the revenue for sixty percent of the money that we spend, sixty-two percent, I think, if we brought the chart up and, uh, another thirty-one, thirty-two percent in sales tax. Mecklenburg County's budget is funded about twenty percent via property tax. Eighty percent of their revenue that they use to operate is fees for services.
Now, will you repeat that again, please, so that everyone can hear that you said twenty percent of Mecklenburg County is fun, it's funded through its property tax?
Yeah, so I mean, this, their, their documents are public record like ours. So if you go and look at the fiscal twenty-three, um, city of Charlotte and Mecklenburg County and Charlotte are distinct difference. Um, but city of Charlotte's taxes, if you look at the revenue as a proportion of their total budget from property tax is twenty percent.
And the rest of it's taken from fees?
Yeah, many, many, many different types of fees, right? They have an airport, hotel fees,
sports fees.
franchises, corporate.
Alarm fees.
You, you name it. There's, with, Mecklenburg is significantly different than a suburb. Um, you know, city of Charlotte is a, is a major metropolitan city. Their form of government is significantly different than ours. We do try to benchmark on them where we can because we do compete with them for residents. We do compete with them for employees. Uh, we compete with them on quality of life. Uh, but they, it's apples and oranges. It's very hard for us to compare to the city of Charlotte, um, when they're just funded and run completely different.
Thank you, Mr. Gibbs. If, um, I think it's already muted. Um, it looks like we've got one other hand raised. Um, Tony, if you're still there and would like to speak, if you could just state your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, Tony, I'm Alano, fourteen sixty Moss Creek Drive, Harrisburg, North Carolina. I just wanted to, uh, endorse what the other, um, homeowners say about this is necessary, know that we want to, but, um, yes, decides increases are necessary, evil. And unfortunately, we do have to pass it. Uh, that's all I want to say. And, uh, that question is, what is recrusal? I'll see you there.
Please, please on the Zoom. Thank you, Tony. Is there anyone else on the Zoom call that would like to speak during public comments? At this time, the public hearing is now closed. Um, before we move into council comments, I would like to, um, make some comments myself. I want to take the time to really thank our staff and council members who were active participants through this entire budget process that, as you have heard multiple times, extended many months and, and many hours. I am particularly thankful for those discussions, opinions, views, suggestions and brainstorming that really took place in, in a productive environment and the appropriate environment um, where questions could be addressed with facts and not expressed or carried out on social media. I think if history has taught us anything, is that we're not going to solve the world problems on Facebook or Instagram. But rather through meaningful and very direct conversations that don't discredit the process and time that went into this tonight. I have been available and have personally answered every email or voicemail that was left for me regarding budget questions and concerns. I think I counted it was right around a dozen that I received. Um, although my role as mayor has no voting rights, I only kind of serve as tiebreaker. I want to make it perfectly clear that I fully support what our town manager and staff have brought to us and what they have presented to you over the last several months. Um, as the town manager mentioned earlier, he cut six of the seven requested employees and cut capital from three point eight to one point six million before it even came to the table for council to review. That really gave us kind of a bare bones, somewhat recession-proof budget. That really allows us to make some of those changes during these next economic conditions that we're not quite sure what looks like several years from now. It's a solid and a commendable effort from town staff. Is it perfect? Absolutely not. Um, can we continue to evaluate and streamline things? Of course. And I feel confident that you have a majority of council that's dedicated to do that, um, to ensure the safety of our town is monitored, measured and managed. Full transparency, sitting on the other side of that die Full transparency, sitting on the other side of that daisies before I was elected as mayor, I had no idea what went into a budget. I had no idea I was going to be presented with multiple three-ring binders that were awfully heavy to carry and required separate ones to fit all of the documents in it. I also did not attend the budget meetings. I didn't, didn't know what was involved in all that. But you elected me to lead God and research and ask questions, and that's exactly what I have done now and that I will continue to do. Not of the mindset, nor is it on any agenda of mine for us to keep putting this off and kicking it down the road. There isn't a good time. It's an election year. There's not enough crime, just not the right time. The decision's in the details, and that has been transparent and available to the public for months with very little input. This is the time to engage and get involved. I do understand that this decision tonight is critical, it's impactful, it's not going to please everyone. We're not in public service to please everyone, that's impossible. But it is going to require our due diligence and continuing to educate the public along with full transparency, and that's very important to me and I know to the council members sitting up here. But that also goes two ways. I challenge you to speak to your elected officials, dive in and participate. I think we're all fairly accessible. That way you can better understand the decisions that we're making. There's never going to be a good time for a tax increase. But as a taxpayer myself and raising my family here, I'm willing to pay sixty-five cents today to know that we're in a safer place while providing a high level of services. So with that, I'll move into council comments before we make motions. And there's actually three separate motions this evening, and I'll discuss that in a minute. But want to start with council comments?
I'll jump in. I like, I'm sure the rest of you probably had several sleepless nights, and then last night, I think my head finally hit the bed about two, sat there for another hour contemplating. And, you know, we've talked about these, these meetings, go back and watch these meetings. And honestly, I think if you go back and look at the first three meetings, I don't know if it's audio, if it's video, whichever, you will see and hear my own aggravation that I carried the first three meetings. And my peers up here know that I was very aggravated because much like the residents heard, a couple of years ago, we put in a six cent tax increase. And I was under the belief that we were on a ten-year plan. We weren't going to need any more money. And the first thing I hear coming into our budget, we got to pony it up, and we got to do it now. Why now? Well, it's, this is coming. And, you know, we tossed around every possible scenario. You know, you look at the slide that was presented earlier tonight. We took seven employees that were requested, we cut it down to one, actually four, to look at adding the police to that, the three police officers, and then the one HR employee. We cut capital from three point eight to one point six. We delayed eight point six million in three years. And that's on top of the last two years, we've been delaying for COVID. We were mindful of COVID, not knowing how COVID was going to impact our community. So we are already pushed out as much as we can push out. So when I get these phone calls that say, hey, you can do this, you can do this, you know, my first question is, are you aware of what we pushed out already to this point because of COVID? Because COVID, people were losing their jobs. It was a bad time. You know, the townwide, the CIP was cut or delayed by thirteen million in its first three years. I can go through the rest of his slide, slide deck on that, and I'll stop it with that. But I don't, I take it very seriously what we do up here, as well as there are several residents that are very engaged. There are others that want to show up the last minute. And Jim, I will comment, I didn't say it to you. I did say that comment today about there was not any residents at our meetings. And it was out of my own frustration because where that comes from is when we spend thirty hours sitting in this room and come back last month and we present this whole budget. And then we have folks that show up three hours before we're getting ready to meet, deciding they want to tell me we need to make our officers more efficient. They want to tell me that we need to streamline whatever business. We need to cut the parking wreck because they feel the parking wreck director makes too much money. It, it's hard to have compassion at that point and understand it. I didn't say it to you, and I would never say it to you. I have engaged with you, and I appreciate the work that you put back in our community to keep us all, what I would say, in check. You know, I commended Alton and Maurice and Jennifer. At the same time, we all up here work together as a team, and I appreciate that we worked as a team. I mean, we don't all agree. I think somebody today listed that you got this many Republicans, you got this many Democrats, you got this many independents. At the end of the day, we, as Maurice said, we are residents in this community. This is our community. I got involved because I didn't like seeing what was going on. I think most people are up here because the same reason, they saw what was going on and didn't agree with it. Do I like the tax increase? No, I don't. It was the worst thing that I wanted to do. But when I looked at the data we were given, when I talked to our sheriff, our sheriff makes himself available, whether he comes to our budget meeting, he's at a lot of our functions. Our lieutenant, I have actually given our lieutenant's number to residents and said, he is okay with me giving you his phone number, please call him, have the conversation. If you think I'm interpreting the data incorrectly, reach out to him and see if maybe he understands it differently than what was presented to me. Again, as I said, I'm not a hundred percent that this is what I feel that I wanted to do to the community, but it's what I feel we had to do. You know, the last thing that I was told today is I said, well, you do know that come next election, you're going to get slaughtered in the next election. I could care less. Right now, that was never in my mind. When I made this decision, I had a police report, our police study, I had the data from the sheriff, I had Lieutenant Meesmer talking to us, I had the sheriff talking to us, Ben Shaw. I had our town manager. And at the end of the day, at no time did I ever go, oh, is this going to get me elected? I don't even know if I'm going to be honest. But I will tell you, your safety to me is more prominent than anything else, and that's where I had to put my hat. And I will put my hat there every single day. I will stand on it, and I will defend it, and I will support it tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Ma'am. Next.
Alton? Madam Mayor, I just wanted to say that we really went line by line through the budget, you know, working late into the night, looking at all the expenses. Between all of us here, there's some really heavy technology, engineering, financial background that we're really scrutinized, all the purchases, questioning software purchases, questioning various, you know, refinancing decisions and things like that. So we really looked through, working through spreadsheets, and thank you, Brian, for that, so we can see what we can cut, what we, what we can do with it. And the way I understand it is we're coming up renewal contract with the sheriff's department. If we do nothing, then who is to say what's going to happen in two or four years? There may be other people coming in, and they may go for a decision to just create their own police department. And at that point, we're going to be faced with twenty cent increase. So I feel like this decision now is really the only decision we had an option to do. As Mr. Smith said, that we couldn't do, we couldn't right now sign up for two percent tax increase now or two cent, and two cent next year, two cent next year. So we had to either do the middle option or do nothing, and then just hope for the best as far as time, you know, crime increase and things like that. So I feel like this is the best option while keeping everything else lean. Like, we know all the departments are running lean. Parks and Recs served over two thousand kids this spring and served tremendously. As far as personnel, like staffing levels, I know, Jim, you mentioned, they do so much with so few folks. It's really unbelievable. The other thing that I do understand, and I feel, I really feel the weight of it being entrusted with the public service. And I feel like I watch this a lot. I, I don't watch my own pocketbook as I watch these numbers and scrutinize this. I, and I do feel like that, like, if you're in this position, this is what you need to do so that everybody else can sleep at home at night and not have to go to these budget meetings and be here till one AM morning. I do want them to know that someone is here is watching and trying to do their best with the, you know, the regulations that we have, the limitations that we have, and trying to do what we can do for, best for the town. Thank you.
May it fall down the line. Ian, would you like to comment?
I guess just briefly, you know, during the budget meetings, I was the one threatening a no vote on all of this because I was, I was worried about, you know, some of the art of funding, and maybe we could offset it. Although I agree we need the sheriffs one hundred percent, I was trying to come up with creative ways to offset it. And it's, it's really tough. It's a tough decision. It's the toughest one I've had to make thus far, since I've been sitting up here. I used to have hair. My beard used to be black, three, three, two and a half short years ago. So, and, and I'm, you know, I'm fine. It's, it's a thankless job, and that's fine. But, you know, a lot of people don't really understand that this, this crime is a problem, and it's getting worse. See, murder in Harrisburg Park last December, a child pornography ring in February, a retail goods distribution ring in September, that was on the news. A drive-by shooting in, it's technically Mecklenburg County, but connected to Coventry. I mean, that was an eight-year-old boy. I believe there were four of us were on that call with CMPD in those neighborhoods. So it's not nothing. And when I finally came down to it, you know, my wife sent me a picture of my two-year-old daughter on the way up here, and I said, you know what? I have to vote for it because I won't sleep at night if something happens to her or anybody else. Because I was worried about the two hundred bucks that was going to hit me in March, and I'm not going to do it. So I will be supporting it.
Thank you, Ian. Maurice?
Twice tonight, I've heard comment, 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 and now you want to raise taxes. Comment, 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 and now you want to raise taxes. And I've sat with these people since January, and I've yet to meet one person, one back here, wants to raise taxes. None of us do. And we have filtered through this and through this and through this and through this. And we have just found this to be the best option. We need law enforcement. We need a good law enforcement presence. We need to protect what we have. It's why we ran. It's the first time I've ever lived in a small town. It's beautiful. It's wonderful, and I just want to keep it that way. So yes, I will be supporting the tax increase.
Thank you, Maurice. Donna, would you like to comment?
I've talked to Rob. We've been talking for past three, four weeks about my fears and worries about the tax increase. So it's not new to him, hearing me say what I said earlier. Lieutenant Meesmer knows, I've talked to him earlier, over the past couple of weeks, he knows how I feel about law enforcement and knows that I fully support them, and really, in all honesty, want the best for their safety versus ours. Because I know when they work together and have the staff that they need, we are all safer. My biggest concern is other people. Nobody got a missed council for themselves. I pay the same taxes as anybody else. But I, I am concerned about other people. I care deeply about other people. And I want people to understand that there has to be something else we can do. I fully support the budget. I don't support the tax increase. So that's where I stand.
Rick, are there any additional comments?
No, ma'am, Mayor. I'm good.
Thank you.
So I'd like to thank everyone for coming out. As everybody else said, I'm concerned, and I've been out there. You know, today someone said in one of the emails, oh, we didn't even know there were meetings. So when we meet as a council, it has to be made public, and it's out on the agenda because you have, you have to notify if there's going to be a court. You know, the books that Jennifer talked about, we've got draft one, and we've got draft two. We went through these by an item by line item. We talked and we discussed it. And trust me, before I came to this room and sat around the table, I was looking at every one of those line items and making comments to where else my council members were probably tired of making comments. I want to take you back on a little history. So before I ran, I sat out there in the audience. It was two thousand eighteen, and I came to planning and zoning meetings. I came to town council meetings, and I went to budget meetings. I remember sitting out there when they talked about the police study, and one of the first things they said, well, we can get the UNCC students to do it. Well, then it came back, well, they don't know nothing. We don't need them. We need to get a profession. So then it went back out, and there was a professional study. We were talking before I got on council, before Alton was there, before Maurice was there, before Ian was there, before Jennifer was there. So it came back, I believe, in twenty twenty, and it was presented to us. And so it was presented one night in a long meeting that we had, and only, it's like you couldn't concentrate on it, right? It was so much information. So there were members of two councils ago, they wanted this strongly, very strongly when I was out there, you know. So how would they fund it today? I don't know the answer to that, but, but I want to move on. I want to remind you that we're talking about an enhancement, not a full police force, like Alton said. If we were going to go with, and as like Rob said, if we were going to go with that full police force, it wouldn't be eight cents, it'd be twenty cents. And here again, as Rod pointed, you're talking about a facility where you can book suspects. You're not going to Cabarrus County. A facility that holds them, staff that is able to do all the administrative work. So someday Harrisburg might need that. You know, we're not looking at what Midhill has or what Hunterville, Hunter, Huntersville has. We're looking at Harrisburg and an enhancement. All right? So if we, if we continue to look, we get two officers that are by your county dollars, all right? So for one point nine million, we get fifteen officers, tremendous, tremendous amount for our, our dollars. We get tremendous services, all right? And remember that it's Cabarrus County Sheriff's Department that takes the liability. Harrisburg doesn't have the liability like Cabarrus County has. If we went to our twenty cent per hundred and had our own police department, this town would have to take on the liability. That, that's significant right there. And I'm going to present you in a few minutes to some other items about statistics on problems that we've had in Harrisburg. But, but I want first to say Harrisburg is not on an island. We're not on an island that says, wait till two thousand homes get here, and then you can come to Harrisburg. If you go up Highway twenty-nine from four eighty-five to Morehead, you see nothing but apartments. You go past the Speedway and you see apartments starting. You come up Highway forty-nine, you see it coming to the property line. I've been told that we only need two police officers. And when I've confronted them back with that, they said, that's not what they said. But that's, they said, we only need two. And when I've confronted them back with that, they said, that's not what they said. But that's, they, they said, we only need two. As we all know, if you have a bump up or your house gets broken into, you want immediate. You don't want to have to wait for an hour for somebody to come. And if you were in Charlotte, that's the way it is a lot of times. And if we don't have this extra staff, it's going to take a while. Let's, let's not forget that these officers protect us seven days a week, 24 hours a day, 365 days a year. So if we wait till those homes that come here, we can't do that because they're, it's coming anyway. If you go and look, put in the address of UNCC, 9200 University City Boulevard. You say, tell me all the crimes that have occurred in the last two months within a two-mile radius. You come back with 828 misdemeanors occurred touching our county line, which is Harrisburg. Those misdemeanors include items such as larceny, 268, robbery, 10, motor vehicle theft, 24, fraud, 76, drug calls, 27, disturbing the peace, 154, assaults, 139, burglary, 39, arson, two, sex crime, one, vandalism, 60. So it, it goes on and on. As, as Councilman Patrick said, and I won't reiterate, the retail good distribution ring that was in Harrisburg, they were in the house. Right? Coming here and people were coming out into that house to buy it. Town center pornography, my goodness. Town center pornography in Harrisburg? Murder in Harrisburg Park? Behind Providence Baptist Church, needles and drug paraphernalia? The kid that got shot in the leg that was eight years old? The recent overdose behind Dollar Tree just two weeks ago? Discharge of firearms, aggravated assault. And, and, and that's, that's happening in Harrisburg. And then you talk about what's on the verge of, of Charlotte. And, and I'll go back, I've said it many a time over, why did we come to Harrisburg? I moved to Harrisburg because it was close enough to Charlotte, but yet far enough away. That's not the case anymore. It's almost too close now. So we had a tough decision. We had a tough decision. Our UDO says that we are responsible for being sure that we keep the residents of Harrisburg safe. We keep their property values up and we take care of them. So I'm not trying to lecture, I'm just trying to make people aware in Harrisburg that there's a lot that goes on that we do not know about. And you know, we've had emails about speeding, especially on 49. So as, as Lieutenant Meesmer pointed out, that will be one of the very first things that we address. So I thank you for coming. And although it will be rough, and let me just throw this out. So for me, my house, I will get $224 on my house with this property increase. But divide that by 12 months, it'll be 1,868 a month. Also have two lots and each lot ought to be an additional $56. But if I look at the $18.68 that I'm going to pay each month, if I went to Starbucks, which I don't, that would be over three coffees. And I've gone to the fish camp and spent $18. So that's one meal. But I, I do recognize my fellow councilperson, Diamond, that I understand some people will struggle. I, I, I get it, but I want them safe too. And, and we need them safe. And you need the children, there's a future that are safe. And I'll go back to that last thing. Town center child pornography bust because they thought Harrisburg was small enough probably and they were going to get away with it and they wouldn't be recognized. So having said all that, I think you understand I will be voting for this budget. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Councilman Dallinger. Rob, do you have anything else you would like to add?
Nothing is thoughtful as you guys put out there, but I, I certainly want to, you know, focus and clarify the decision on this budget. I, I thank everybody, you know, for the process. We all sat in here and went over it countless hours. I watched each and every council member struggle with the decision emotionally, physically, come through alternatives, you know, at council, woman Diamond had mentioned, you know, we went through, can we tier this in? What are the options? But at the end of the day, this is a very large budget, right? Covers a lot of services, covers lots of things that we do for the town. And all of those things, I'm very proud of our staff. They do very well. All of our services are, it's a focused budget that we focus on those services. And tonight's decision on the taxes really comes down to, are we, is it time to add police for the town of Harrisburg or is it not? If, if not for that decision, that six cents of that eight cents wouldn't be necessary. The two cents due inflation and other operating costs may have been a, another discussion of whether or not that was even necessary because we may not need finance and HR people at that point to help support the, this additional sheriff staff. So I just want to make that very clear that, you know, as you, as you look at, you know, the process that we went through, everybody took it very seriously. Everybody is very solemn in, in that regard. And there really wasn't much of a decision to make other than are we prepared to move forward with additional policing? And if so, is now the time? I, I think that's what it came down to. And I appreciate, you know, everybody's compassion throughout it with me and everybody helping me out through the process in my first budget here at the town of Harrisburg.
Thank you, Rob. So there are actually three different pieces of legislation, which is why there are three motions that are attached to this budget this evening. The budget can be modified throughout the year, but the tax rate cannot. So to be clear, your support for one of the three requires support of the other for, in order for this budget to be enacted together. So we are going to start with our first motion and take a roll count vote. So we will go down the line and, and get your yes or no. I think the first one on our item is there a motion to approve the budget ordinance, fee schedule and capital improvement plan as presented? Is there a second? We'll start Councilwoman St, St. Williams.
Yes.
Rodney is a yes. Councilman Smith, yes. Councilman Price. Councilman Patrick. Councilwoman Alteen Kotel. Mr. Russo?
No.
Thank you. The motion is carried. The second motion on the floor is to set the tax rate for the fiscal year 2023 as 43.5 cents per $100 in valuation and to be collected by the Cabarrus County Tax Office. Is there a motion on the floor? Thank you. Is there a second? Thank you. Go back down the line again.
Yes.
Yay.
Yes.
No.
Thank you. And motion is carried. And our final motion this evening is to approve the water and sewer rate resolution as presented. Is there a motion on the floor? Second? Down the line again?
Yes.
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 No.
Thank you. Motion is carried. We need a quick five-minute break. Lots of water. So if you'll please excuse us, we'll take a five-minute break and then resume with the second public hearing. Thank you, everyone, for the break. It was much needed. Next on our agenda, we have got, we spoke of the public hearing to consider annexation and rezoning of a portion of parcel off of Stollings Road for a single-family home. And Sushil was already queued up and ready for the presentation this evening.
I am ready to go. Good evening, Mayor and Council. So this is less contentious, I guess. Couple of hearings, minor ones tonight in front of you. So the first one is H2022R to consider annexation and associated rezoning to carve out a portion from a parent parcel there listed on your screen, screen and creating a new parcel that will be part of the town once approved. So the request in front of you is to rezon that portion, total 4.25 acres. The, the goal here from the property owner is to keep those parcels, the portion of the parcels in one zero sticks. And the way it sits today, a portion is in our ETZ, the extraterritorial zero sticks and then a remaining portion is in the county. By taking it through rezoning and annexation, we'll be able to keep it in one zero six. The current zoning LDR, which is the, for the county portion and RE rural estate is for the ETZ. Going through the rezoning, the request is to rezon the entire 4.25 acres to rural state RE. There's an overview of where the property is. On the top right corner, you can see the marker. The green polygon is the ETZ boundary. And the blue, what you see on the top right is your corporate limit. That's the Harrisburg limits. On the, on the left-hand side is a little closer look of what that parent parcel looks like. And then that green is the portion that will be carved out and created a parcel for that 4.25 acres. There's another closer look of the boundary survey that was included in your packet. Going back to the land use recommendation, how does it fit with what we have adopted in our HLLP? If you look on the map, the store is where the property is. It's designated for medium density residential, mostly intended for mix of different housing, moderate to, moderate density, two to three dwelling units per acre. In this case, this is different than a typical subdivision of what we presented. It's, it's a one-off, very low-density, one lot to be built for a single-family home. How does it relate to that medium density residential to the UDO zoning classification? So you can see on the screen for a medium density residential, there are a couple of couple of classifications you can choose from residential villas and residential medium density. But in this case, it's going down. So it's, it's a much lower classification, which is more in alignment with very low-density residential, which is the rural estate. The, the density based on the acres is pretty low and staff is constrained, is consistent with the HLLP and meets the UDO requirements as presented. With the rezoning, as I mentioned, we also received the annexation request. We did all the notification in the paper, mailings, all of that is reported. This is voluntary contiguous annexation, meaning there is a corporate boundary right across that touches the boundary for this annexation request. We did not have a neighborhood meeting. Typically, if you're up zoning, going from a lesser to higher classification, that's when you do the neighborhood meeting. So it was not required for this one. As I mentioned, it, the request is consistent with Harrisburg area land is planned for residential medium density and also meets our UDO requirements. Planning and zoning board was presented with, with the request and they approved that council, they recommended that council approve at their main meeting. Staff is doing the same and supporting what is, what is presented to you today. So tonight, the request in front of you is to hold the public hearing, close it and it will come back to you for final action at the July meeting. With that, back to you, Mayor.
Thank you, Sushil. Are there any questions for Sushil before we open up for public hearing? At this time, we'll open the public hearing. We'll go to those here in person and then take any comments from our Zoom, folks that are joining us via Zoom. I do not see anyone that signed up in person. Is there anyone in person that would like to speak on this? I will move to Zoom. Is there anyone online that would like to speak? This time, the public meeting is now closed. There is no motion at this time and final consideration, as Sushil pointed out, will be made at the July 11th meeting. Next up, we'll move to the public hearing to consider rezoning of parcel at 9625 Reedie Lane associated with an annexation request for the town services. And Sushil, again, thank you for presenting.
This is another public hearing that's pretty, pretty one-off and easy one for us to consider tonight. Again, the property is at 9625 Reedie Lane. The property owner is requesting annexation. And with annexation comes rezoning to be able to access town sewer services. The current zoning on the property is CR countryside residential. They requested, requested zoning. This is not a conditional zoning. So that's an error there, is RE rural estate in the town limits. Again, this is just to give you an overview of where the property is. If you look on the top right, the marker shows where the property is. There are no corporate limits nearby, which is why we call it non-contiguous voluntary annexation requested by the property owner. On the left-hand side, you can see the closer look of that 15-acre parcel. This is another view of the survey of that property. Going back to the HLLP recommendation, the property is in our low-density residential growth area. If you look on the map, the store is where it is. It is meant for one to two dwelling units per acre from that gross density, single-family detached. And if there are subdivisions, we typically do have option for conservation subdivision to preserve more open space. Or you do your traditional with, with whatever the UDO has prescribed for this, for this area. Going back to the recommendation, LDR, you have RL and RN, which are low-density and medium-density zoning classification. But in this case, it's even going lower than what is in the UDO for, from a zoning point of view, very low-density residential is what it aligns with. And staff is making that consistency statement to meet the requirements in the HLLP from a, from a zoning perspective. We also received, as noted earlier, annexation requests, did all the notification. Property owners and, and in the paper is requested, we are holding the public hearing tonight for both rezoning and annexation. As noted, this is similar to the previous request. We're not up zoning. This is more down zoning, going to a lower classification. UDO does not require us to do neighborhood meeting for, for those reasons. Staff noted that this meets the HLLP recommendation and the recommendations in our UDO. We are recommending approval along with planning and zoning board recommending that council consider approving it. Tonight, again, you're not taking any action, holding a public hearing, closing the public hearing and taking action at the July meeting. Back to you, Mayor.
Thank you, Sushil. Are there any questions for Sushil before we move to public hearing?
Sushil, will you go back to the diagram where the property is, please? There you go. So is there a house on that property or is the house across the street or across the property line?
I believe they have started construction. I think they're getting ready, pad, pad ready to construct it. That's when they needed the sewer and needed to be annexed.
So it's not going to be for the 9530, which is the house across, because it says 15 acres, right? But I know there's two partials with the same owner. One's 10 and one's five.
It's the one that's highlighted. So this probably, I don't know if you can see.
Only be for that property.
Yes, there's just one.
Thank you.
Thank you, House Madalger. Any other comments? This time, we'll open the public hearing. We'll go to those here in person and then on Zoom. Just please remember to state your name and address for the record. Again, we did not have anyone that used the signup sheet at the beginning. Is there anyone in person that would like to speak during public comments? Is there anyone joining us via Zoom that would like to speak? Thank you. This time, public hearing is now closed. There is, again, as Sushil stated, no motion at this time. And final consideration will be made at the July 11th meeting. Moving right along into old business, our first item up is the consideration of conditional rezoning and zoning map amendment for the cookout property off of Highway 49 and Zmax Boulevard. And Sushil is presenting again this evening.
Good evening again, Mayor and Council. So the- Good evening again, Mayor and Council. So, the public hearing on this request was held last month. So, tonight is not a public hearing. It is an action. But if the mayor chooses to, you can always solicit comments. The request in front of you is to rezone two parcels, total 1.54 acres off of Highway 49 and Gmax Boulevard. The goal here is to rezone the property to be able to do a drive-through restaurant. In this case, the brand name is Cookout. The property is already in the town limits, so does not require annexation. The current zoning is EC Employment Center, which does not allow the drive-through restaurant, which is why the rezoning request in front of you to rezone the property to conditional general commercial. Again, the location map, we know where it is. Don't want to spend too much time. I did want to go through the same presentation last meeting. So, I'll try to go through quickly and highlight some of the new information. But if you have questions, please feel free to stop me as I go. Again, just to highlight some of the elements on the site plan, which was included in your packet, there are no access points on this property off of 49. Both of the access, two access zone on the map is off of Gmax Boulevard. You got all the landscaping, building, yard requirements as prescribed in the UDO, which is shown on the map. We do have segmented knee wall. If you drive along 49, that's been the norm now as part of the landscaping element that has the green and gray. So, we used to do pretty long knee walls, but we kind of changed the course to interperse green landscaping with segmented knee walls to give that better look. And we've been able to achieve that through 49. So, this will be the same here as well. There will be covered drive-through along Highway 49 for that front is, the building is narrow towards 49, but you will not be able to at least directly see the drive-through. That will be covered, and the building will be brought to Highway 49. We do have underground stormwater detentions on the rezoning site plan. As part of this conditional rezoning, we've also negotiated and requested that property owner provide us easement to allow us to install that town's monument sign for the park down the road, and they've agreed to do so. These are some of the elevations that were included in your packet and presented at the last public hearing as well. That shows you, I guess, the color rendering gives you a better picture. It's a mix of brick and hardy plank combination. Does not look like a typical cookout. We've worked with them to make it Harrisburg-oriented design. Very proud of what we've able to achieve and appreciate the flexibility from the cookout for us to be able to do this. From a land use recommendation, again, this property is in the area of what we call the mixed-use district that encourages mix of various uses from residential, commercial, office, vertical, horizontal, mixed use, you name it. If it is designed properly, we do encourage those in these areas. From a zoning classification, mixed use, you got multiple options. In this case, C1 was in our HLLP, which translates to in the new UDO as general commercial. It is consistent with what is recommended in the HLLP. From a adequate public facilities, the water sewer, they do have access to it. Again, we adopted new policy a few months ago that anytime there is a project that comes in for sewer capacity, it has to go in front of the committee. The committee reviews it based on what's available at that time and make the final allocation. That would be the same here. We don't commit to any sewer capacity at the rezoning stage. So, once and when this is approved and when they're ready for construction documents, we'll pick up that conversation and we'll go through the committee for that allocation. We did the TIA for this to look at the traffic impact, but there were no significant mitigation that came out of it. No school impact since this is not a residential, and we do have enough safety and sanitation services to offer the property once it is rezoned and approved. Since this was a conditional rezoning, we listed several conditions. This was included in your packet and published as well, so I will not read through this since we did that at the last public hearing. But these are typical to make sure that we do not forget some of the high-quality elements. We want them. There's a lot of conversation about the architectural renderings, the easement that I mentioned earlier on my slide. So, again, the neighborhood meeting, when we started the rezoning for this, was held in early 2022. As I mentioned earlier, everything that is presented to you is consistent with what we have in our adopted plan and also in our ordinance. This was presented to the planning board in April. They recommended that council consider approving the request. Council did hold the public hearing and close the public hearing at the May 22 meeting. I don't believe we received any comments. We also did not receive any comments during the neighborhood meeting. With that, staff is recommending that council approve the rezoning request that is presented in front of you. Happy to answer any questions. Back to you.
Sushil, you noted there were no TIA improvements. I know last month when we discussed this property, I asked about signage to get them back to 49 south.
Towards the park and go to Sims.
Right.
Yeah.
Is there consideration to make that a right out only? I mean, and the reason I ask this is just because the sheer volume that Cookout does. One, you're either going to back them up quite a bit because they're not going to figure out they can have a hard time getting across, or I just see a bad accident happen.
Yeah, eventually, that section of 49, if we look at our corridor plan that we adopted, will have a median there. So, they know that there will be no left out going out of that. But again, we connected Forest Drive, which is now the Gamble McClure Lane. The whole idea of connecting that and connecting to Sims Parkway was to provide that alternate connectivity going to the light. We do not have plans to put, restrict that turn movement today, but I think that proper signage can do some of that work, and we'll look at that during construction documents.
I mean, want to be delicate how I phrase this. I don't want us to have a major accident there with the idea that in the future, we're going to be able to prohibit it. But right now, it's going to be a major accident. I mean, a sign is not going to stop them trying to shoot that traffic. If you sit there at 5:00. I mean, today at 4:00, I came out of Arby's. There was no way, and I didn't even want to attempt it. And I had to go down to Providence Baptist before I could do a unit to come back. So, you're going to have 16, 17, 18-year-olds, 18-year-olds, new drivers trying to shoot it across.
Yeah, we did talk about those options for the NC DOT, but they will not allow us to put a median just for that section. Typically, if you do install a median to restrict those turning movements, it has to go to a point, typically an intersection. To go that far out, who's going to pay for it? Cookout definitely was not, because the TI did not bring that up as a problem based on the data and safety issues. So, that did not come up as a mitigation. As we go through it, yeah, obviously, we don't want that bad accident to happen, but that's something we can consider down the road.
Can we include the tradition like we have at CBS?
The pork chops? Yeah. I think NC DOT does not allow that anymore, but I'll let Rob add more to that.
Yeah, I'll say, I agree 100% that that left out there eventually has to be restricted. I think that's going to be necessitated by the Y. Their traffic's going to be really the driver of that because we want to allow a left in, but not a left out. So, that's going to require mediums like you have going into key lane.
Why can't we do it now and not take the risk?
Well, this, the cost for something like that is going to have to be borne by somebody other than DOT. They won't allow it. It's going to require a widening, and this business isn't a big enough business to put something like that in. And their TIA, because of the size of their business, doesn't require them to. So, we could ask them to, which I believe Sushil did back when we first talked about this. But it's just not, it's not required. We can't make them, and it is owned for not exactly that purpose, but something very similar. So, although I agree with you, I think planning's hands are a little limited with Cookout. And certainly, the town could do a CIP project and do that, or I think it is identified as part of the YMCA, TIA, to limit that out now that we have it connected over to Sims. But I agree with you. It's not that during peak hour, that's not even a term capable of making. It's currently without the Y and without Cookout. So, I think it's just a matter of, you know, when and who pays for that improvement.
So, I looked at this the other day. As Zmax goes down and around behind Zmax, there's a driveway on the other side of Zmax. Can any of that be changed to a road and shift traffic out down there that's trying to do a left-hand turn, which would be closer? It's actually right inside Providence Baptist, but it's actually part of Zmax property, probably.
Short answer is no.
Yeah.
The property owners would have to agree to that. As part of the Y site plan, they've asked if they could do that, and the church told them no.
Well, yeah, what about Zmax? Or did the Zmax people say, no, I can see the Providence?
Yeah, Pepsi and Providence land lock that before you ever get to Zmax.
Just asking.
We thought about that, too.
Yeah.
We'd like to get them over because we actually have that signalized.
Yeah, every time we look at this process, we're always, you know this, Rodney, by now, we always look for that alternate connectivity if there is possible option. In this case, we just didn't have that on the table.
Can you, you know how there's that middle lane, and then it turns into left only to get to Moorhead? Is there a way to extend that left-only lane, make it a little longer, put those partitions that you talked about? And that will kind of probably block that exit?
I don't follow exactly. I think Moorhead's a little bit.
She just said extend the Moorhead turn.
Yeah. Basically, I think she's talking about increasing the left turn of stores all the way down and put the ballards.
We can certainly request from DOT to see if we, they would certainly let us pay to put those plastic ballards in. If they approve that, because it's going to, those will be competing lefts, right? The left queuing on the Moorhead might back up past this location. So, you're going to be cutting down that turn lane. So, we'd have to get their permission to do that. But if they gave us permission, those aren't an expensive proposition. They're high maintenance, and they're not very attractive. But they're quicker than widening the road and doing what we have done here in front of Harris Square.
But it's like you said, they allowed it in front of CBS, right? We had to get approval there.
Yeah, and if you remember, you may have been on council or just shortly after you came in. Mark Morgan from District 10 came in and agreed to put some in out on Rocky River near Hickory Ridge eastbound, I guess, yeah, eastbound out there because a neighbor asked for it. Now, you know, probably wasn't warranted and stuff like that. But, you know, if you get somebody on the right day, you might go get permission. DOT's strange animal.
Any other councils? Any other comments from councils?
No way to share the drive with Oz.
No, the way it is set up now. We actually tried to get alternate connection through there, and that was also not possible given where their driveway lanes are. So, you would not be able to punch that connection.
Any other comments? Is there a motion on the floor to approve the conditional rezoning and zoning map amendment for the Cookout property on Highway 49 and Zmax Boulevard? The motion, is there a second? Thank you. All in favor? Any opposed? The motion is carried. I will look to Rich for a consistency statement.
Thank you, Mayor. Based on the application that you've seen and the staff report and the staff presentation, this rezoning is consistent with the provisions of the Harrisburg area land use plan and is reasonable and in the public interest, also including the conditions. I don't think I mentioned that.
Thank you, Rich. Is there a motion to approve the consistency statement as presented?
Those should approve.
Thank you. Is there a second? All in favor? Any opposed? The motion is carried. Thank you, Sushil. Next up is the consideration of annexation and conditional rezoning, zoning map amendment for properties off of Robinson Church Road and Peach Orchard Road. And again, Sushil will present.
Again, good evening, Mayor. This property, or rezoning, was presented at a public hearing last month and is brought back to you for action tonight. The request in front of you for Edge 2021-06R is to rezone three parcels. Total acreage is 53.21 acres to be able to subdivide and build 71 single-family homes. The property is currently in the county and will need to be annexed, and tonight's public hearing is for both rezoning and annexation. The current zoning on the property is countryside residential, CR, and the request of zoning in front of you is conditional residential medium-density, which is our classification. Again, just to give you an idea of where the property is, top right corner, you can see the marker just on top of Hawthorne subdivision, which is part of the town limits. This is where the property is. The left-hand slide, little bit closer look at how those three parcels fare, and you can see the county zoning there. This is the site plan that we went through some of the highlights at the last public hearing. I'll still go through those. And there are some changes between the public hearing based on the council comments we've made working with the applicant. So, I'll try to highlight those as we go through. So, as noted in the previous meeting, and nothing had changed, the primary entrance for this subdivision is along Robinson Church Road, and will have a planted divided entryway. We have a connector road that goes through the subdivision that is in our adopted Harrisburg area land use plan, which is why that segment of that road was required for this subdivision to be built. The reason you see that yellow box compared to the red that was in the previous public hearing was, we modified the alignment one to make sure that it's exiting at the right angle on the stub street that you see there. And we also changed the cross-section. So, the cross-section that was presented during the public hearing was a two-lane road with bike lanes as part of the travel lanes, and then you got sidewalks on both sides, 60-foot right-of-way. The 60-foot right-of-way still remains the same, but now we're able to modify that to a three-lane section, two travel lanes. Turn lanes where needed, we took away the bike lanes and put a multi-use path on one side and put sidewalk on the other side. So, it changed the cross-section, but your overall width remains the same. As you can see on the map, there are two steps, one obviously related to the connector street, and one is tying into that Hawthorne subdivision, which was meant to be connected whenever things happen on this property. We have 50-foot wide planted buffer with six-foot-high berm along Robinson Church Road. And then 25-foot wide buffer, planted buffer with six-foot-high berm along rest of the perimeter of the property, which is, as I noted during the public hearing, more than what our UDO requires. So, this is beyond what is in the requirement. We got the mailbox kiosk with parking as required in the UDO, and you can see on the map where that is located. And then one of the things we changed between the planning board hearing and the last public hearing was that the lots fronting the tour fair were reversed back. Now, they're fed with the alleyways. I know Councilmember Rodney brought this up pre-meeting. So, these are private alleys, but built to the public standard. Uh, I know Councilmember Rodney brought this up pre-meeting. So these are private alleys, but built to the public standard. We got a couple, couple, more than a couple, three active open spaces for different purposes there, highlighted on your map. And, um, also, of course, Robinson Church Road, as they build a subdivision, will require, uh, the curb and gutter sidewalks, and there is a left turn lane added into, uh, to go into the community as well. And then there are planted berms along this connector road, which we do require along the thoroughfares. Uh, one of the things we, we noticed as we are reviewing to bring this in front of you was there was an oversight. It was meant to be visible on the map, but was not visible during the public hearing is that curb and gutter and sidewalk and then Robinson Church fronted section. So that has been modified to, to be, to make sure it's visible, and you can see that, and that sidewalk and curb and gutter will tie into what's there in front of Hawthorne today. So that's another change there highlighted in yellow. And, uh, one of the other concerns that was brought up during the meeting was that stub connection. Uh, that is one of the requirements in the UDO. We are required to make those connections. But to, to elevate some of the concerns about the speeding, we have requested the applicant to install a raised crosswalk, uh, to, to slow down some of the traffic going through there, and, uh, we were able to do that through, through, through the process. And, uh, the other concern that came up, uh, was the speeding and, uh, well, not speeding, but accidents that happened along that segment of the road. In looking at the data, a lot of those accidents were speeding-related. Uh, we believe at the staff level that the curb and gutter section along this front is, and, um, adding that pad for the sheriff vehicle will, will deter some of that speeding. It's not gonna change the behavior completely, but will definitely help modify some of that behavior. Uh, we did look, work, talk to NC DOT about adding that turn lane. That was not an option. There, it would create more safety concerns and widen the road. That would increase the speeding. Uh, so this is, this is an alternate way to, uh, address some of the concerns you brought up at the public hearing. And there is a note, those were revised after the public hearing. Um, going back to some of the data, I think everything remains the same, one-point-three-three units per acre. Minimum lot size is fifteen thousand square feet, lot width, uh, seventy-five by hundred-twenty-five. Um, the setbacks had changed at the public hearing. We, we presented twenty-five feet, which is now moved to thirty feet to, to address that concern about the driveway length that was brought up at the meeting. There are some of the renderings that was presented to you during the public hearing. Um, quickly go through those. And, uh, going back to the hell of recommendation, the property is in, uh, area what we call the low-density residential, allows up to maximum of two units per acre, uh, single-family detached home. You have an option of going conventional versus conservation. In this case, the request is a traditional subdivision. It's not a conservation subdivision. Oh, and the, and then on the map, you can see the highlighted, um, connector road that connects Robinson Church Road to Hickory's Road. So from a, from a zoning classification in the UDO, how does hell up recommendation translate to that? You can see on the map, low-density residential, you have option to either choose RL, residential low-density or RM one, which is a medium-density classification. In this case, the request is to rezone to RM one, but RM one allows a little bit higher density if you go strictly conventional by right. But since this is a conditional rezoning, we're capping that at one-point-three-three units per acre. So once the rezoning is approved, the site plan and the density remains with the land. Even if it changes ownership down the road before it is built, everything remains the same unless the property owner decides to bring it forward and make any changes. Otherwise, what you approved today will remain the same. Uh, in terms of public, adequate public facilities, we do have access to, uh, town sewer water. Uh, again, there is a note about that pending approval. Once it is approved and they get to the construction document stage, that's when we talk about that allocation. If there is, uh, allocation, uh, sewer capacity to be allocated at that point. Uh, we did not do the TIA because it was not required based on the threshold we have adopted in our UDO, uh, typically seventy-one homes, seventy-two homes is, is that threshold, um, with, so, but again, even though the TIA was not required, some of the improvements you've seen along Robinson Church Road, Peach Orchard Road, the, the front is curb and gutter sidewalks, the, the building of the connector road, which is required in the hell up. Uh, and we back, went back and forth on changing that cross-section, adding, adding the raised crosswalks. All of those transportation elements were added, and we, we do appreciate applicants working with staff based on council feedback between the public hearing and now to make, make this a better, uh, project for you to consider tonight. Um, I know this, I was, I was laughing when, when there was a comment made about the school capacity. Yes, we, we are unable to control what happens at the school, but the good news is we do work with them. Uh, we do provide the growth numbers, uh, the project as they come in, so they can look at the numbers, uh, and, and plan for their capital improvements down the road. In this case, uh, if the project is approved, it will add twenty-seven new elementary school students, fourteen, uh, middle school and eighteen high school. And then on the right-hand side, you can see the translation. If we were looking at today, what does that mean to the future capacity? It's already at capacity for elementary. It's gonna make it a little bit worse from hundred-ninety, it goes to hundred-twelve, middle school from ninety-three to ninety-four, and then the high school goes from hundred-twelve to hundred-fourteen percent in terms of capacity. And these are the conditions that was included in our packet, and I read through those, uh, during the public hearing. So I'll not spend a lot of time unless you have any questions. But I wanted to highlight, uh, two conditions that we added, uh, post-public hearing. One of those was to address that, um, driveway issue, the vehicle spilling over to the sidewalk. Uh, we added the condition that the minimum setback will be thirty feet to allow for that back-to-back parking, and also the concern about the rental cap. So that is also added as a condition, and, uh, rental units is capped at ten percent through deed restrictions. Uh, as noted, uh, tonight, uh, along with rezoning, we, we do have annexation petition. Uh, we did publish notice and did all the notification requirements. This is a voluntary contiguous annexation, uh, for the fact that there is Hawthorne subdivision within town limits next to it. It's an annexation plat for your reference. We did, uh, hold neighborhood meeting, uh, back in twenty-twenty-one, November of twenty-twenty-one. Um, that was a required meeting. There was a distant meeting held virtually on, on April twentieth by the applicant. Uh, as noted in my previous slide, the, what you saw today is consistent with what we have in our adopted document, uh, hell up and also meets the requirements our UDO. This was presented to the planning board at their March meeting, and, uh, one of the changes during the meeting came out was that alleyways versus the frontage, which was a good feedback, and we were able to change those between the planning board and the public hearing, and you heard some of those changes we made between public hearing and now. Uh, we did hold a public hearing at the May twenty-twenty-two council meeting, and tonight, uh, it is presented to you for the final action. Staff is, for the reasons we stated before, is recommended approval. With that, we'll turn it back to you, Mayor, for any questions you may have for me. And we do have a represent from, uh, applicant, applicant, if they want to speak afterward.
Thank you, Sushil. Councilor questions for Sushil or?
Sushil, on that connector road? Because the way it's been defined today, where the next development comes in, those standards still apply to that next neighborhood. Is that correct?
So the, the cross-section that we established today with this rezoning, that cross-section is established now for the entire thoroughfare.
Okay, so there, there's no way we can get shortchanged down the road?
No.
Well, that, I think it was a new policy, but will the, the signage be put in that this is a future road?
Yes.
And then the last question is on that pad, will it have something like official use only on it to prevent somebody from, like, trying to sell their car on a Saturday?
Yeah, yeah, some of those details are still to be determined, but I think at this point, we've worked with the sheriff department to have the pad, but all those notifications will, will, will be able to do that during the CDs.
You have a car you're trying to get rid of?
Get some nice tennis shoes instead of gas. Any other questions from council?
Can you, can you go back to your plan? We marked it up for what we were gonna do later. Yeah, that one. It says Robinson Church frontage. Isn't that really Peach Orchard there? Because that extends
That is correct.
From the corner, because there is curb and gutter on Peach Orchard.
No, it is supposed to say Peach Orchard on that orange.
Okay, just make sure.
Yes, that is correct.
So it'll start, it'll basically, they'll improve until it goes to Robinson Church, and then they'll just stop.
No, it will come down, the entire furnace of Robinson Church curve into Peach Orchard and connect to Hawthorne.
You'll basically complete that.
Yeah, we'll complete that section.
Okay. So if I understand it, based on, you know, feedback you got back from council, they've agreed to modify the cross-section, realign the road, which will be a future public road. They've added more buffer than we require. They've agreed to a ten percent rental cap. They put a raised crosswalk to deal with speeding questions going into Hawthorne. Added a pad for sheriff's vehicle, because that seems to be the reasons for most of the accidents. Agreed to front yard setbacks at thirty feet along that way, and agreed to one-point-three-three units per acre, which is lower than the zoning request they're asking for requires.
Well, it's lower than what the RN one allows.
Allows.
Yes. So it's, I mean, from a density, even though it's a RN classification, the density is more of a low-density.
Right, right. So better.
Better, yes.
Yeah, I mean, that seems like a lot of considerations that they've made for, for seventy-one homes in my book. Frankly, I wish more developers would work with us to kind of set these precedents and not just try to shoe horn us with five hundred homes. I think they've realized that that's not gonna fly anymore.
Well, and you're setting a good example by looking at project in detail and what happens in the public hearing. People are watching what happens. So there is expectation when they come into Harrisburg that you can't bring a standard fit in other community and build it here. Um, so it, it depends what feedback we get from you, and the staff is always there to support you, and whatever is in the UDO, we're here to enforce that.
Thanks for the work, Sushil.
Any other questions?
And I'd send an email over. It's a hundred-feet turn lane into
The left turn lane.
Yes, right, going out of town.
Correct.
Right, and then I'll show that here or we'll show it on the construction document?
Well, we have a note in there, but once we get into the detail, it will have much more detailed picture, yes.
Well, to the developer and the landowner, I know you think I've been hard on you and have it talk to you, but I do appreciate what you've done, because twenty years down the road, twenty-five years, and, you know, a recent, I went to a recent developer meeting, and it's the first time I'd ever heard any developer ever say it. Fifty years from now, they want their product to look the same. First time I'd ever heard it from any developer. Um, I, I wish all developers would come with that mindset, but I, I do appreciate you listening very much to the council, to the staff, and thank you.
Developers, would you like to speak? Are you good? I don't think there's any other questions. Thank you, Sushil. Appreciate that. Is there a motion on the floor to approve the annexation, conditional rezoning, and zoning map amendment for properties off Robinson Church and Peach Orchard Road? Oh, yes, could I miss that? Sorry. Back it up. Council comments?
No.
Public, public comments?
One minute if you want to, right?
Yeah, those are the only two names that were on for that. Is there anyone else in the public that, in the, start this all over. Anyone else in council chambers that would like to speak on this this evening? Is there anyone joining us via Zoom that would like to make any public comments?
See no hand there.
Thank you, James. Okay, so I'm going to fast forward again. Is there a motion on the floor to approve the annexation and conditional rezoning map amendment for the properties off Robinson Church Road and Peach Orchard Road?
We'll approve, Mayor.
Is there a second? We've got our second, and they are all in favor?
Uh.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Thank you for being here this evening and for your patience. Um, on Rich for consistency statement?
Based on the application by the applicant, the staff presentation and staff report, and with the conditions, uh, including the two additional conditions that were added, this rezoning is consistent with the provisions of the Harrisburg Area Land Use Plan and is reasonable and in the public interest.
Thank you, Rich. Is there a motion to approve the consistency statement as proposed?
So move.
Second? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. The motion is carried.
Thank you.
We're so close. Thank you very much. Um, there is no new business this evening that was made in the agenda, um, revision that will be moved to July, so action items. Uh, the only thing I had dotted down, Rob, was the liaison for sustainability, but I think that has been covered.
I think that was it. Let me check my notes real quick. Um, with some, we had some residents that we're gonna get back to, but, uh, uh, Arbor Day mailing.
Yeah.
Make sure that we have the liaison covered when, uh, Sushil breaks up with us. Um, and then we had, uh, some things that we had already talked about, uh, with striping and dotted lines and, and all that stuff, so.
Great, thank you. Um, we do have a legal matter to discuss with our county attorney that we will need to go into closed session for this evening before adjourning. Is there a motion to move into closed session?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried, so we will move into closed session. Thank you, everyone who is there. Oh, we're listening. James, can you grab Ian? See him right around me? Is there a motion on the floor to adjourn tonight's meeting?
Motion to adjourn.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion here.
So Sushil?